I apologize for the delay in getting started tonight. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm serving as chair of tonight's meeting. We got a couple of quick introductions. We'll get started with our meeting. We have the following commissioners present here in the chambers tonight. Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Aaron Ward, Commissioner Dwayne Beth, Commissioner Rose Isles. Online, we have Commissioner Jake Miller, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner Mark Muller. We have with us the following members of the planning and urban design staff, Gunnar Hand here in the the chambers with us tonight, along with Janet Parker. Online, Jeff Conway with Unified Care Legal Staff and Byron Toy is joining us online as well. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Janet Parker, who will read the opening statement and tell us how we'll run tonight's meeting.
We would like to welcome those participating by telephone, Zoom, or in the commission chamber to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or are present in the commission chamber. And Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Board members that are participating by Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak. And after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in the commission chamber, please state your name before speaking, once the chairman recognizes you. For those members of the public attending the meeting virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco KCK.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any person wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-third majority vote of the board. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support or opposition that did not speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation. The board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Our first application is BOZA 2023-019, Thomas de La Paz for Whittier School Lofts LP for property at 290 South 10th Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Oh, yes. Good evening. I'm Christine Bree Wood at HGM Architects, 7520 Washington Street in Kansas City, Missouri.
Can you go and tell us about your project?
Yes. So the applicant proposes to build 20 apartments in abandoned Whittier School building at 290 South 10th Street. And the applicant is applying for approval of a change of zone from the CPO Plan Non-Retail Business District to the RP5 Planned Apartment District. Also, a master plan amendment from low-density residential to high-density residential, and a preliminary plat of two parcels. The applicant is requesting two variances. Variance number one is to provide a variance from a rear yard setback of 25 feet to 10 feet. 10 feet provides enough space to meet the non-vehicular open space requirement and does not adversely affect general welfare. Without the difference of 15 feet, it will be harder for the owner to bring in more families to the community with the development of the adjacent lot, which will be accessed from Gilmore. The 15 feet will give more space for a building, parking, and non-vehicular open space on the lot on the west side. Variance number two is a variance to the setbacks of the south parking lot from the property line and the street line. For variance number three, the staff has removed this variance request. The variance for the amount of non-vehicular open space is not needed because the requirement is met with the current design. The applicant does request condition number three of the staff recommendation regarding the stairs be reconsidered. And I'd like to ask if this is an appropriate time to address this.
Well, why don't we get to, we'll go ahead and hear the rest of your presentation, then we'll take it up with staff and get to that.
Okay, at this time, it completes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? In favor or in opposition, raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand, get his comments, and we'll take into consideration the requests on that number three. Thank you, Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. As the applicant noted and the representative noted, there's a variance regarding a repurposing of the old Whittier School in the central area. Also noted, it was originally noted as three variances again through a revision and resubmission of the design. We were able to eliminate variance number three once before he was variance number one and two. Again, this is in the central area plan, just off 10th Street to south and central. You can see it here at current location. So again, there's a developable parcel on the other side, and the applicant is part of the plat that you'll hear later this evening as the city planning commission is, it will basically split this in half or split it apart. A little more context. This project has received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are some older notices of violation as it relates to the property in its vacant stage, all which would be addressed by this, have been addressed and would continue to be addressed by the redevelopment of this project. So essentially what you have here is the front yard of this, although the historic building faces Gilmore, the front yard is 10th Street. Currently, all the access is going to be off 10th Street moving forward. So the rear yard is the western property line. Staff's recommendation is for denial of the rear yard setback variance as it could be fixed by simply moving the rear yard, rear line over. Again, part of this was already accomplished to, to remove that third variance and then the second one. So this is an existing kind of driveway cut. If you were to play a little bit of forensics here, this is essentially the existing parking lot from the old school play area, and then they're adding a parking lot to what would have been the hardtop four-square area, playground area, if you will, here. And so this one, if we were to put it back in the same place that it once was, again, this is an existing curb cut, so we can tell that we think that's where it was originally. It's basically just putting back what it was so that current setbacks for parking standards, we're going to go ahead and chalk up to, this is the historical parking arrangement, and so it doesn't meet those historic standards. Not too similar from when we do these historic rehabs, we kind of have these types of variances accordingly. So staff agrees with, recommends approval of variance number two as it relates to the setback of the parking, but recommends denial of the variance for the rear yard setback. As it addresses, and this is from Gilmore Avenue, this just went through the Landmarks Commission and did receive a C of A. The proposal is essentially to fill in this stairwell. The State Historic Preservation Office did the initial review for this before the UT was given that authority a few months ago. So when this was still being reviewed outside of the area by SHIPO, they agreed that the proposed intervention here to essentially eliminate the stairs, as we understand it for security reasons, is fine. Staff believes we should save the stairwell, and you can just close that off by fencing it off as opposed to doing a major infill of dirt and other backfill of other materials as needed, and then creating a retaining wall accordingly. So again, some of this can be figured out in in the final, defined, final stage of this project. This specifically should be addressed at the city planning commission, but because it has a carryover conditional approval, we could do two things. You could eliminate it because that same condition of approval exists elsewhere. So it's not an issue tied to the current variance in front of you. So you could propose to eliminate variance number three, or excuse me, condition number three. That condition again will be addressed at city planning commission, and we can take it up there. But because it's not germane, and we don't really want to spend the time at the Board of Zonient Appeals addressing a not variance issue, I would say my recommendation would be to just clear it from this, and we can deal with it later this evening.
Can you go back to number one in your recommendation for denial? You believe it can be, you believe it can be fixed?
So if you look at the site plan, and again, this isn't exactly what the plat is, but, but again, if, if they were to move the rear, their rear yard property line as it relates to the plat, what is it, 15 feet? Is that right? Yes. No, 20 feet back, they wouldn't need the variance. So it's a plat issue. The contention is that, you know, it makes it harder to develop this site, which may, which is, I mean, it's a smaller area to, to develop, but again, we think that it can be resolved in the plat. If planning, if the Board of Zonient Appeals doesn't agree with staff, we do have conditions of approval for the whole case.
All right. Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
So for variance one, can you tell me, I mean, I, you're saying it could be eliminated just by moving their plat back, but obviously then that curtails what they can do on that piece of property behind them. So was, I guess, what is your, what is your reason why you would not want, why do, why do you want to get rid of that variance? What, I mean, what does it do for you guys? I mean, I know it's not part of, it's not, it's not, it's not conforming, but.
Second, I'm looking up the actual plat. Go back to the site plan. Oh, actually, you can probably see it better here. So right now, this is the existing extent of the historic church. They're proposing to cut it through here. We're saying you should push it back. So it does two things. It eliminates the variance, but it also retains the existing site of the historic structure. And when we look at historic structures, we look at, and in this case, it's state and it's also federally designated. We look at the exterior from fed, state, and local perspective. We look at the interior from state and federal perspective, but we also look at the, the grounds, which is why the stairs are also an issue for staff.
Is that a wall on the backside?
Is it just a? There's pictures. Hold on. I believe it is. Yes, there's a great change there. Can't see it from there. Yeah. Okay, so that, there is retaining wall here. It kind of goes into the curve here. So we're asking to essentially pull it into the area. Yes, it would reduce the size of, I think it's plat parcel two. Lot two, excuse me. No, lot one, excuse me. The, in the plat, the proposed building would stay on lot two.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, did you have another question? No. Okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion when ready. You want one that encompasses all, I mean, both of them? Or depending on how, if somebody wants to pull something out?
You can do it in a single motion, but, or in a single vote, but we would just wanted to
clarify.
clarify which is which.
Thank you. All right. Motion?
Commissioner Ward will make a motion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
So I'm in accordance with a, make a motion to approve BOZA 2023-019 for variance one, I might be to deny variance one, but to approve variance two and eliminate number three.
That work?
Correct.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Ward to approve, excuse me, to deny variance number one, approve variance number two, and eliminate variance number three. Is there a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call?
Beth?
Hi.
Connolly?
Hi.
Isles?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny variance one, approve variance two, and eliminate variance number three, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
What do we do? A stipulation three? We left it in.
It was removed, wasn't it?
If you wanted to, I mean, we're going to interrupt rules of orders, so I think we could, if you wanted to eliminate number three so that we carried that over, and I apologize for the omission. We would, I think we could rehear the motion, right? Can we rescind, rehear?
It's already been passed.
Well, someone can vote to reconsider.
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity.
Fisher Miller?
If we want to.
Yeah, I was going to say, procedurally, the way I can make a motion, having voted on the prevailing side, I make the motion to reconsider the previous motion.
That's, that's everyone. Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Miller for reconsideration. Is there a second? Can the original maker second to reconsideration? All right. Okay, so we've got a reconsideration. So is, do we need to make a new motion?
Well, first of all, we need to vote.
You need to vote to reconsider, and then you need to, we go back to square one.
All right, here we go. All right, let's vote to reconsider. Roll call, please.
Beth?
Hi.
Connolly?
Hi.
Isles?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to reconsider the previous decision of approval and denial passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Okay, the case is back on the floor. Commissioner Ward, do you have any motion?
Want to make sure I'm doing this correctly then, so I can't, if you're saying I can eliminate number three, or how you want to do this?
You can eliminate number three, but you want to go back to stipulation number three in the, in the file. If there's a stipulation, there's a variance. You want to eliminate the variance.
If you want to make the same motion, all you would have to do is recommend that we remove condition number three.
There you go.
Also, so eliminate condition, eliminate variance three and, and stipulation and condition.
Yes, all right.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve BOZA 2023-019. Approve variance, I'm sorry, deny variance.
One.
One. Approve variance two, eliminate variance three, and eliminate condition three.
Correct. Is there a second? That is a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the, on the new motion? Everybody knows what we're doing? Roll call, please.
Beth?
Hi.
Connolly?
Hi.
Isles?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones? Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny variance one, approve variance two, eliminate variance three, and remove condition number three in the staff conditions passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Great, thank you. We will see you at planning commission.
Our next application is BOZA 2023-026, Brian Lockett for property at 614 Orville Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Lockett, are you in the audience? Brian Lockett. Okay, let's push it to the end of the agenda. Wait a minute, here we go. Okay, folks, when we call your name, let's get ready to go. We got a long night, and you're just making it longer. Okay, Mr. Lockett. Janet, you're going to have to let him speak as I do not have rights to call him.
Okay, and I'll get that fixed in just a second. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, when we're calling your name, make your way up to the front, please. Okay, Mr. Lockett, we got you queued up, ready to speak. Go ahead.
Mr. Lockett, you need to unmute yourself.
There you go, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. I am wanting to.
I need your name and address, please.
Brian Lockett, 614 Orville Avenue. I'm sorry, this is my first time doing this, sir.
So that's okay. Tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, I, I would like to build a carport on, at the, at the rear of my property. It already has an accessory building there, and I was wanting to see if I am able to do another accessory building because the current one doesn't allow for, for you to park any kind of vehicle in, inside of it.
Hey, but it's my view from the photographs. You've already built one. You're not asking for permission, right? Because you've already done it?
Yes, sir. I did it with a.
So why are you here?
Pardon me?
You're here for a blessing because you've already done it, correct?
No. Yes, yes, sir. I've already done it.
And why did you build it before getting permission and building permits and everything that's required and necessary to do that?
I didn't know I needed a permit for a carport.
Okay. What other structures are you building on the property besides the carport?
That's it, sir.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
So it says that you're not able to park a car in your, the existing garage. Is that true?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's too narrow for you to park any vehicles in there currently right now, from when you pull on the side of the house.
And what is your intention with this property? Are you, do you live there?
No, ma'am. I was going to sell it. I've, I've flip houses for a living. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lockett, did you, did you put in a pool next to the, the current structure?
No, sir. Everything that you currently see was already there. I pulled permits to, to do an addition on the rear, which I was approved for, and the only thing that I did differently was do the, the rear addition and was the carport. Everything else was in its original standing, and I did the retainer wall.
So the addition, being able to get in and out of the existing garage was a problem before?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Property?
Yes, sir.
Other questions for the applicant? So you're wanting to build a carport in front of the garage?
Well, we, it will be across from it, yes, sir, but in front of it, yes. I see what I. But.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or against? Please come to the microphone or, or raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, this BOZA case is related to a second accessory structure being proposed, so that's one more than allowed by code. It also has some setback issues in and of itself. It's really up against the property lines, two of the property lines, and the third one combined with the other accessory structure. It's over 1,000 square feet. And while it doesn't maybe look like it from the aerial here, this is ever so detached, ever so slightly, I should say, detached from the existing single-family home. And so again, you can kind of see, you can't see it in the pictures that great, but real quick, just to reference everybody. So Elizabeth feels like the alleyway for people who live on Orville and the front yard for people who live on the other side of Elizabeth. It's very unique street in Strawberry Hills, so there's a condition there. There's some great change. You're going down to Sixth Street here, and so the door for the existing garage is on the east side. So you kind of have to come in and figure your way into that, and you can see that a little bit better here. So the garage is just to the right of these pictures, right? So this car is parked in front of the existing garage, and so there's this little lip from the street Elizabeth up that the applicant is saying is difficult. At the end of the day, this is a self-imposed hardship, although this looks like a core carport. What is proposed is a garage. Let's make no mistake, it will be enclosed as a door, all these things. And so this is in the, just to some additional context, this isn't a central area plan. We received no letters of support or opposition. There are a couple of notices of violation on this property, as this is a self-imposed hardship. I, he's asking for forgiveness, not permission. Staff recommends denial of all three.
Questions for Director Hand? So this is planned to be a garage, not just an open carport. The design plans that were submitted?
Looks pretty enclosed to me.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Director Hand?
Question?
Commissioner Ward?
What if he, what if he tore down the old garage?
Staff has tried to get Mr. Lockett to either connect the garage to the house, which has its own building permit issues that we'd have to get through. We've asked him to maybe consolidate into a single garage, i.e. either demo the one he can't get into and maybe direct it towards Elizabeth Avenue and do it that way. So yes, the, the short of it is, staff believes you should consolidate what you're proposing as two into one under 1,000 square feet. And if you need to change which direction it faces, then this would be the opportunity to do that.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Jones?
So Gunnar, you're saying that for this to be in compliance, one way or the other, he'd have to tear something down or reconfigure something as it stands right now, correct?
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Not exactly. He's got an existing detached garage, which meets the code or is legal non-conforming. He's proposing a second one that would need three variances. I think very similar to how staff feels on every time we have a second accessory structure in an R1 zone like this. If it doesn't meet your capacity or size of existing structures, we, we try to encourage everybody to consolidate into a single accessory structure to meet the code. And if it revolves, and if it involves reorienting to get better access, I think that's a, in this instance, a, a second benefit.
So you're saying to reorient the structure to fix the issue, you wouldn't necessarily have to do any demolition?
Again, I, I don't think staff is, we, we're not the applicant, so there's many options here. If we are to take what Mr. Lockett is saying at face value, which is he can't use exist, existing detached garage because he can't access it on the site as is, but he wants more space. But he wants more space and requires these variances to do that second garage. Staff believes in order, because we are here to make sure we uphold the code, right? Um, variances should be few and far between. Um, we try to encourage him to consolidate what he needs into a single detached garage. And if that requires demolishing what's there and reorienting it so he can functionally use it, then that would be our preference.
Follow up, Commissioner Jones, are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion when ready. Commissioner Isles?
This is Commissioner Isles. I move, um, that we deny appeal or deny Boza two zero-two-three dash zero-two-six. All three variances as it's not in compliance with code and will not promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the city and their neighbors.
Thank you. Motion made for denial by Commissioner Isles for the reasons stated by the maker. Is that a second Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
Isles.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this appeal for the reasons stated by the maker passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to make an announcement about the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry for those folks that are waiting for the start of the Planning Commission. We have a couple more cases on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're running a few minutes behind. I appreciate your patience. We'll be with you shortly.
Our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero-three-zero. Lourdes Mendoza for property at sixteen oh eight North Twenty-third Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Is you're at Reyes sixteen oh eight North Twenty-third Street?
And tell us what you'd like to do.
Um, well, this is the variance line is that, um, the appeals, you file to grant interference for the rear yard setback. Um, it requires a setback of not less than twenty-five feet from the rear property line. No, that's the wrong one. Sorry. Okay, this appeal has been filed to grant variance for the maximum percentage of the front yard paved. Um, it's, uh, the paved parking area for, or customary driveways and the required yards putting street shall not exceed forty percent of the area of those yards. For one or two family dwellings, the applicant is requesting a paved area that covers a hundred percent of the front, front yard, a violation of a hundred fifty percent of the allowed paved coverage. Variance two is that this appeal has been filed to grant interference for, from the maximum open fence requirement. Uh, the open fence means a fence in which opening between the materials of which the fence is constructed represents not less than forty percent of the total surface of the fence. When viewed particular to the face of the fence, this applicant is requesting to have a solid fence in the front yard, a variance of sixty percent. Variance three is the, um, this appeal has been filed to grant variance on the maximum fence height in the front yard. An open fence no more than four feet in height is permitted anywhere on the owner's property except within the site distance triangle. This applicant is requesting a fence that is five feet tall, evaluation of one foot.
Okay, so you've got three variances. One, you've got too much concrete in the front yard, right?
Yes.
You've got too much fence and the fence you've got is too tall.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Come to the microphone or raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning or Design. Uh, again, we have before us a, a case where, um, essentially the, uh, front yard had been paved, uh, all concrete. Um, not too dissimilar from some previous cases we've seen to manage, help manage stormwater. Uh, this, uh, this location here, it's in the central area. Uh, it's actually it's in the north area. I'm sorry about that. Um, right off of a leg of Jersey Creek. Um, and then a stretch of right of way, right? And so there's an alleyway behind them and the, or basically at the low point of North Twenty-third Street before you hit the creek. So it's all waters kind of moving across this site, both from, as we understand it from the applicant, both from the alleyway and a little bit from the street even. You can see that. I can show you a few more pictures. So we're in the street essentially looking at the front of the house. This is all concrete. That's the fence that we're also talking about. And that's their side yard where they park. Uh, so it sheets kind of across the whole site. So to manage that, they basically, and this is now looking, this would be looking north at their front yard from, I think it's their neighbor's yard. And again, there's that fence that we're talking about. That's the front yard. This is their side yard over here. Um, so it helps manage and prevent stormwater intrusion into their house. A couple of things here. Uh, again, this was, this is a bit of a, uh, self-imposed hardship as well. Uh, both for the illegally or fence not built to code as well as the front yard, um, not meeting code requirements here. Uh, there are no letters of support. There are no letters in opposition. Uh, again, staff recommends denial of all of these, uh, variances, uh, but we do have conditions of approval of needing. Essentially, staff believes, like we did in those other cases, that there's another way you could design to manage stormwater that does not, um, inhibit the code. To the applicant's point, and then we've seen this a couple of times, it's also a pretty small parcel. It's not a very large front yard. Um, and it does have all the terrain going against it.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? My, my experience with small parcels, you don't have a lot of dirt to work with to move the water. And was this work done by the existing homeowner, the fence and the concrete?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And just as a quick aside, apparently there was something going on on the other side of the alley. Like, I think that this business did some concrete work and that that increase in impervious surface added to the existing issue. So it kind of has cascaded a little bit. And we've been trying to work with them for the last couple of months to figure out a way forward. So.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? And what was your, what was your stipulations moving forward? If we decided to move forward?
If you did want to move forward, I think we'd ask, I think we're asking them to correct all of the notices of violations. Um, they do, they are using uh, the right of way as their own yard. Um, so we've asked them to remove their stuff out of the public right of way. Again, they're basically have their play area at the public right of way. Um, and again, I think if it, as it relates to the fence, it's a solid stone wall. Um, so it's going to be hard to, if you were to, but deny the, the variances relates to the fence, it's going to be very hard to do anything but just tear that wall down and rebuild it.
Okay.
It's not masonry is the issue. It's the opacity is the issue in the front yard. It's got to be four feet tall and, uh, no more than four feet tall and have that opacity of forty percent.
All right, questions for staff?
And that, uh, Commissioner Ward, sorry.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
So the front yard faces North Twenty-third Street. Is that what you guys are basing that off of?
Yep.
And basically there's a street to nowhere.
Correct.
Are the questions or a motion? Go ahead, Commissioner Isles.
This is Commissioner Isles. I make a motion to approve the variances for Boza two zero-two-three dash zero-three-zero. Um, with the following, with the conditions, uh, that staff has requested.
Anyway, we have those down, Janet?
I'm sorry?
You have the conditions stated by Commissioner Hand?
Yes.
We were to move forward with approval. Okay. Motion made for approval of all three variances by Commissioner Isles. Is there a second subject to the staff, additional staff stipulations added by Director Hand?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
Nay.
Isles.
Hi.
Ernst.
Aye.
Did you say no?
Yes, ma'am.
Jones.
Nay.
Miller.
No.
Muller.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I have a four to four vote.
How many did you need to move?
Um, we have, um, we have nine people present tonight. So we need five to pass a motion. So right now it's tied four to four.
Chair rules in favor of the motion.
So you are voting aye on the approval. Okay, Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the variances in this application, subject to the conditions of staff in the staff report, passes five in favor and four opposed.
All right, thank you.
Our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero-three-five Larry Han with Han Survey for property at twenty-six twenty South Sixty-Ninth Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, are you representing Mr. Han? Lance Pierce?
Yes, I'm not here. I'm here for a short-term rental thing, but I feel like I'm in the wrong meeting. Sorry. I'm not here for Mr. Han, though. Sorry.
Could you please lower your hand then?
Uh,
Hey, Mr. Larry Han. Kenny, are you representing Mr. Han? Kenny. Are you representing Mr. Han?
He is. He is, Mr. Chair.
All right. Can you please go ahead and give us your name and address, please? Kenny? You're unmuted, ready to speak. Kenny? Go ahead and try to unmute yourself again, sir. Okay, go ahead. You're unmuted.
Okay, yeah, I am Kenny Kong Molly, address is twenty-six twenty South Sixty-Ninth.
Can you go ahead and state that again? We can't hear you.
Uh, Kenny Kong Molly. Twenty twenty.
Your address?
Twenty-six twenty, South Sixty-Ninth Street.
Okay, go ahead, please.
And, uh, uh, we, so the property is originally one lot and, uh, um, we're uh, wanting to plat it to, uh, split it into two lots. Um, and the variant is for the second, uh, lot, um, for the width to depth ratio, it, it doesn't meet the current requirement.
Okay, so you're, you're taking one lot and you're dividing it into two, correct?
Correct. Correct.
All right, sorry. It's just difficult to understand you. Uh, any questions for this applicant? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Okay, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comments and figure out what we're doing here.
Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning or Design, uh, this case is being heard in conjunction with plat twenty twenty-three dash zero-two-four. Again, this is for a depth to width ratio. This is in the uh, conference of plan area, sort of in the Turner, uh, neighborhood. Uh, you can see an area of parcel right here. Um, this is the parcel that's going to be split. This is an already, uh, uh, legal mind conforming parcel in terms of lot to depth ratio. Uh, but when you do this proposed, which will be here later, it's not a planning commission, they've created a legal sized lot two. And yet it makes this bulldog leg here to keep the pond in it. Uh, but it then further exacerbates what's left in lot one in terms of widths because you've basically cut the width in half, but you still have the same depth. So, um, this is one of those, uh, I think former county, um, lots during, that got swallowed up during unification and/or annexation at some point. Uh, so it, you know, it's a lot of terrain, a lot of hollers back here. There's a lot of big shaped parcels in this neighborhood. Staff recommends rule.
What's the definition of a holler? Just curious.
A holler is a, uh.
That's all right. I'm not going to put you on the spot. We got a, we got a long night. I just, I just like the word. Any questions for, uh, Director Hand and the hollers? I'm seeing none. I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve, um, this case subject to staff stipulations and comments.
A motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Cause second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir. And the holler is what comes after the hills.
There you go. Thank you. All right, it's been moved to seconded for approval. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
Isles.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Ward.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our last appeal, uh, for this meeting is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero-three-six. Alex Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting for property at twenty-three twenty-four Grandview Boulevard. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Elliott. Got you queued up, ready to speak. Give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, Alex Elliott, fourteen five hundred Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas. Um, yeah, the owner is wanting to renovate the existing building, um, to use it for a, um, candy resale store, basically. Um, and currently the property, uh, well, it's a very small property and the building takes up a large portion of it. And there's only room really for one parking space on site. Um, we have, you know, lots of nearby areas that are available for parking and we have a proposed, um, bike rack for um, other parking options. Um, but really there's not hardly any room for any other parking spaces on sites. We're requesting a variance, um, for this reason. Um, I will say, um, when we sent the, uh, neighborhood meeting letter out informing everyone that what we were proposing, we had some neighbors reach out, um, requesting to have an actual in-person meeting. Um, a meeting was held last Thursday, uh, with the architect, the owner and some neighbors. Um, so I know that was kind of late as far as your guys' actual meeting deadlines, but I wanted to let you guys know that that did happen. I think an email was sent to planning from one of the neighbors informing them of that. So in case you guys didn't know, um, and they, they stated that they were, they approved, um, the neighbors approved of the proposal.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Janet, do we have acknowledgement of that meeting in some respect, either the, the first one or the second one?
We have confirmation of the first meeting, which is the required meeting. The second one would have been optional.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
Uh, can you tell me, uh, the property owner, how long they have owned this building?
Um, that is unknown to me. I don't believe it's very long. I know the building is in pretty bad shape right now. Um, and that was a question, that was a concern that was raised in that meeting. Um, and of course with the renovation and stuff, all of that is going to be repaired.
Okay, yeah, I saw that there's quite a few notices of violation. So thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, I do have an email from. I do have an email from Paul Soptick uh, confirming that the second meeting took place and that they are in favor of this application.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand. Mister Conley?
Yeah, I guess Janet, who's in favor? The people, everybody that was at the meeting? Or just Paul Soptick?
Um, let's see, I can read this into the record if you would like for me to.
Sure.
After a meeting with the owner of the property and Roger Avalas, project engineer, I feel the change of zone um, should be approved. So there's a change of zone that goes with this appeal. The owner and Mister Avalas answered questions that were asked as to the nature of the business will be used as a warehouse to house merchandise for resale to local businesses and to the parking needs needing one space instead of four as defined by ordinance and maintenance of the property removal of graffiti by painting a mural on the west side of the building. An improvement of the concrete sidewalks and driveways and keeping the grass areas properly mowed. And I will note that Mister Stop- Soptick is the president of, um, Wine Dot County. Again, Wine Dot County is against crime.
Okay, so it's still here. He said aye, right? Not?
That is.
He was the only person speaking?
That is correct. He did, um, copy Commissioner McKernan on this and someone else that has a Gmail address.
Yeah, I said, so my question is, so he, was he the only person present for that meeting?
Um, I cannot answer that. There's not a list of people on here.
Okay, thanks. That's all I wanted to know. All right.
Thank you. Other questions? Uh, I'm sorry, now I'm with the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign. Uh, again, this is a parking variance for, excuse me, an existing commercial business, um, that's been vacant for some time, but it's been, uh, there for quite a while. I think this is in the central area plan. Again, kind of just south of Central, right off Grandview Boulevard. And again, it's at the corner of Twenty-Fourth and, and Grandview. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Uh, as Commissioner Adams noted, there are some, uh, notices of violation. We believe from our conversations that they've owned the property for at least the last year and a half. Uh, the more current in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three all address the um, structure itself. And so, uh, a, a building, a permit is a condition of approval for this and the, uh, land, uh, planning entitlements for the city planning commission later this evening. They would all address, they would, that would all be addressed in a tenant finish of this project. So we think we can remediate those by moving forward with this project. Again, you can kind of see the parking here, but I think what I, I think what's most evident is there's one, there's only really one spot for off-street parking. They could have had a second curb cut and done additional parking in the rear. That wouldn't have gained very much. This is a local serving, uh, uh, commercial and or retail location. It's on the corner, so it has, uh, street parking on both Grandview and Twenty-Fourth. Um, staff recommends pool.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Isles?
Is this for a retail or wholesale? Shop? Business?
As we say, as they understand, as we as they've explained it to us, it's a resale business. But it would, again, it's being changed the zone to C-one, so it'd have to comply with whatever uses in the C-one zone district. A-again, they could say candy store now, and then they could open up as a closed store or a whole bunch of other stuff if they so choose. I think that's all within the C-one category.
Other questions for staff?
Mister Chair, apologies. I would just know we do have conditions of approval and clear, including adding a bike rack at the location.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or ready for a motion? Richard Jones?
I make a motion to approve both the case two-zero-two-three dash zero-three-six subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones with the added stipulations from staff. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth.
Hi.
Conley.
Aye.
Isles.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And Janet, that does complete our agenda, correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right, thank you. For those waiting for the start of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will take a five-minute recess and we'll get that convene and get you going as soon as possible. Thank you all for your, your patience.
Yeah, it was confusing because people said maybe it's a restaurant.
Yeah. I heard candy store and then I heard storage.
And, and I thought wholesale, you know, a place like that wouldn't require I guess it doesn't matter.
All they want is spot that big. They're not grand big truck.
No, they store.
It'd be like, it'd be like a small box truck.
True, from what's there, right. And that's what you gotta look at.
I know. You know, as I've gotten older, I'm okay with color. I'm just, uh, I mean, especially with all this, people think houses blue, black. Black houses are really becoming a big thing. But, uh,
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Want to go ahead and call the September eleventh meeting of the City Planning Commission to order. My name is Jeff Carson. I'm going to be serving as chair of tonight's meeting. We'll make a couple of quick introductions and get started. We have the following members from the planning staff with us tonight. Janet Parker, Gunner Hand and Byron Toy, who's online, along with Jeff Conway with the Unified Government Legal Department. We have the following commissioners present here tonight. Commissioner Karen Jones. Commissioner Aaron Ward. Commissioner Dwayne Beth. Commissioner Rose Isles. Commissioner Jake Miller. Commissioner Jim Ernst. Commissioner James Connelly and Commissioner Mark Muller. With that said, I'll turn the meeting over to Janet Parker, who will read the opening statement and tell everyone how we're going to run tonight's meeting. Again, thank you all for your patience.
Mister Chairman, before I read the statement, um, I would like to note for the commission and anyone that's in the audience or on the Zoom webinar that special use permit application SP twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three-nine for Karen Porter Williamson for a short-term rental at forty-one-seventy Eaton Street has been withdrawn and there will be no further hearings on this application. We would like to walk we would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom or in person in the commission chamber. Mister Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the commission chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when the application is called and the chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three. For final plaits and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the a opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time and the Planning Commission may by two-thirds majority vote extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda and items on the consent agenda are final plaits, final plans or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda. And when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are in the commission chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and the item you want to remove from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts at that time. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration and making a final decision on Thursday, September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three at seven P M. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the August fourteen, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission Minutes. Plat twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two-five Jose Manuel Yipaz. Final plat for twenty-one multifamily lots at eight fif- at eight-twenty-five Parallel Avenue. And there is a corresponding plan review application. P R twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two-five. Final plan review for townhomes at eight-twenty-five Parallel Avenue. Plat application, plat twenty twenty-three dash zero two six Michael Macris. Final plat for two multifamily lots at fifty-one fifteen and fifty-one twenty-five Gibbs Road. Final plan review application. P R twenty twenty-three dash zero two five James Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects. Final plan review for auto sales and service at fourteen oh one Miriam Lane. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose?
No.
Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty-three, the application of documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does anyone on the commission want anything removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? Okay, see one in the audience want anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion on the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Staff will request that plan review twenty twenty-three zero two five be pulled to add a condition of approval.
All right, thank you. Janet, did you catch that?
I did, yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion on the remaining consent agenda items. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus page plat twenty twenty-three dash zero two five.
Thank you. Motion made for approval on the remaining items made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the remaining items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, subject to the conditions passes. Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
That will now take us back to our one item that was removed from the consent agenda by staff. That is plan review P R twenty twenty-three dash zero two five. James Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects. Final plan review for auto sales and service at fourteen oh one Miriam Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, members of the Planning Commission, thank you for inviting us. We are here to talk about the final development plan, and we have been progressing with staff toward that end. We have been developing the grading plan, erosion control, the the amount of paving that we have all have been submitted now. We are now electing to she the existing three thousand square foot building with stucco. I think that was a concern of the last preliminary development plan. There was an issue that we have an existing brick building there that's been painted, and so we would like to go ahead and stuck with the building. We have been spending quite a bit of time on our utilities, make sure that that works. Currently, there's a septic system that was developed for the for the old building, and I'm going to let Baja speak about that because he's been very integrally involved. But we're we're electing to abandon that system and go with the new system. But we have worked with the neighbors, as you know. We continue to communicate with the neighbors, and I think they're very much in favor of our project. So we continue to go forward.
Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead and give us your name, please.
My name is Baja Hamel. I'm the builder. My address is one one six one three Oakmont Street, Overland Park, Kansas. Like Mr. Sullivan said, we're trying to get the building going. We hired many plumbers to resolve the septic tank, and we couldn't. Everybody comes over, they put their cameras in, and then they end up hitting a deadlock. So we decided we're going to do and develop a system where we can have a low-pressure valve attached to, and then we'll pump our sewer to that area and to tie into the main sewer. We have neighbors are very interested in the whole premise, and they said they are open to tie into our system if if it's feasible. So that's why we're here. We hope that we can get that done, and they need your blessing.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor and opposition? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Gunner Hand, Director of Planner and Design. Again, this case is related to a special use permit for the auto sales and repair shop that was proved earlier this year at fourteen oh one Bearville Lane. What you had left for final development plan. Real quick, this is in the comprehensive plan in the Rosedale area, just outside the Rosedale area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. And again, there are some older notices of violation that would be addressed through this project. Staff left out one condition of approval. It's a standard condition. As the applicant is moving to public sewer, we have a standard condition about public improvement plans that we'd like to add accordingly, and that's it.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Seems like an easy one. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve plan review case number two zero two three dash zero two five, subject to staff stipulations and comments, along with the added stipulation by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Motion made for approval. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye. Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the plan review twenty-five, subject to the revised conditions, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Hold this fair again, Janet?
No, Mr. Chairman, none of the items on the consent agenda will be heard again.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the consent agenda. We're going to move on to the non-consent agenda. We have three items that we're going to hear together. Master Plan Amendment, N P L twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven Whittier School Lofts L P. Master Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential to High Density Residential, Citywide Comprehensive Plan to Convert a School into Apartments at two nine zero South Tenth Street. Change of Zone Application, C O Z twenty twenty-three dash zero one two. Change of Zone from C P O Plan Non-Retail Business District to R P Five Plan Department District to Convert a School into Apartments at two ninety South Tenth Street. Plat Application, Plat twenty twenty-three dash zero one seven. Preliminary Plat of Whittier Heights to Split the Parcel into Two Lots at two ninety South Tenth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty-three, the application of documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo for the change of zone and master plan amendment, the notices to property owners, and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again. Go ahead and give us your name and address again, please.
Absolutely. Christine Bree Wood, seven five two zero Washington Street, Kansas City, Missouri. As our understanding that from the staff recommendation, they are approving the petitions for change of zone, the plat, and the amendment to the master plan, we would like to speak to some of the conditions that have been asked. To start with, it'd be item five of the conditions. The use of the step retaining walls is necessary along public streets or other visible areas of the site to reduce the steepness of man-made slopes and to provide pockets or terraces for re-vegetation landscaping. Every wall six feet in height must be stepped four feet. Of terrace is required every eight feet of wall. We would just like to make a clarification on that, that some of the existing historic walls are over six feet in height, and they will not be modified for historic reasons or stepped. For item number six, the sidewalk along Gilmore Avenue shall extend from the intersection west to the end of the parcel. There will be a small gap between this development and South Eleventh Street, and it's asking to uncover and clean the existing sidewalks, make repairs, or install new extensions where necessary. A brick sidewalk would be considered an historic feature of the site. And in talking with the owner, they do not see evidence of a sidewalk in existence other than in front of the stairs on Gilmore Street. And they propose to restore that sidewalk in front of the stairs, and sidewalk is available on the south side of Gilmore. So they are requesting that the extent of the sidewalk along Gilmore Avenue would be limited to in front of the stairs. For item eleven, install bike racks near the front door or high-traffic entrance or exit. We didn't find any findings that it is a code requirement to provide the bike racks, so we would just like to hear comments as to whether that is required. There is some concern that they wouldn't be used in just would like to be able to have discussion about that. And item number fourteen, the downspout shall be painted to architecturally blend into the building and recess into the corners of building as not to be in plain view of the public. Wanted to comment that it is a historic structure, and it had been discussed during the Landmark Commission meeting that the downspouts will have a copper painted color to them. Just wanted to give some clarification, and the locations will be the historic locations. And then we also discussed that we would, at this time, talk about the condition in the Board of Zoning Review regarding the exterior stairs along Gilmore Avenue. This statement is that they should not be demolished, filled with earth and material uncovered. If the stairs are not used as an access point, install a decorative fence around the perimeter rather than destroy the historic feature of the property. And a comment that we would like to share this evening is that the owner has met on site with the representative of the Historic Department of National Park Service, and the owner expressed her concerns of trash collecting there on the stairs, vagrancy, and safety. And they came to the mutual decision to leave the and restore three steps and continue the wall at the top of the three steps. And this has been formally approved by M P S, SHIPO, and the local landmark commission. Another item that we would like to ask is the property, if it were to be considered the front of the property as Gilmore instead of Tenth Street, is is that possible? And again, this goes back to the owner's desire for the splitting of the lots. If that would create a situation that would say that the west side would be a setback of ten feet and considered a side yard as opposed to the way that is currently being read as a rear yard. That concludes the comments or questions and presentation from my part, but I would like to open the floor to the owner and also consultants on the project.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, my name is Ivan Petres, and I'm co-owner of this property.
What's your address, please, sir?
Sorry?
Your address?
Twenty-five oh five Tracy Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri.
Okay, go ahead.
Basically, the scope of the project is to bring back families into that building. At the moment, the whole lot is about two acres. We did market research, and basically, there is a high demand for housing like this, low-income housing. So trying to use the best of the space, we came out with that split idea just to come up with a new project in the future once we successfully complete this historical building into twenty apartments. We have plenty of space to do parking and landscaping for twenty apartments in that point nine three acres. And also, I can hear that there is a lot of interest to keep the stairs like, you know, like an historical part of the building. But if we keep it like just a picture, it's going to be a black spot for the for the I mean, today is really a risk. So if you really want to use it as the stairs, as the main entrance, so and you see the building from Gilmore, the name of the school is, you know, facing Gilmore. So if we use that, we will have to really give it life, like, you know, a real access, and keep it, you know, maintain it like an access. And if that is the the wish, or the, you know, the decision to use the stairs and keep it and give it real life, then then we can have the west side as a side wall and not as a backside or backyard. And that will give us the opportunity to keep the next lot, lot one, with the space to create more affordable housing under all the codes. So our concern is, we have plenty of space today for twenty units. If the stairs are an important part of the historical building, we have to really go in in real life as a real access. So if we move the main entrance to that area and we use that as a main entrance, then the west side of the wall will be a side yard, and that will help us to keep the ten feet and allow the next project to use it or maximize it under the codes. That is the whole scope.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Connolly, do you have a question for the applicant? Commissioner Connolly?
I said for the first person that spoke, I had a question for her.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, do she have a copy of the landmark commissioner's approval?
I do not have a copy of the landmark commission approval in my possession.
Gunner, is that something you have in your possession?
Mr. Chairman, I can address that.
The landmark was approval was related to the change of zone, not the building itself. All right, I don't think it's necessarily germane. I don't think it's necessarily germane. This will have to come back and get another certificate of appropriateness at the building permit stage.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I wanted to give the opportunity to, um, just a moment if the consultants had. Uh, raise their hand to have anything to add.
Are they online? Are they?
They would be online and if not, that's fine. Just wanted.
I do not see anybody with their hand up at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. And I'm seeing no one, so we will go to Director Han and get his comments, specifically discuss the. Questions that the applicant asked regarding the, the walls, the height of, uh. I guess a couple of the walls are over six foot, the sidewalks, the bike racks, the down, the downspouts. And the, uh, I guess going back to the stairs.
Director Plan and Design, again, we have three cases in front of us, changes on twenty twenty-three zero one two. Master Plan Amendment twenty twenty-three zero seven and Platte twenty twenty-three zero one seven. This one case was heard in conjunction with those in twenty twenty-three zero one nine. That was heard earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals, of which one variance was. Approved and the other one was denied. Again, this is in the central area plan. Staff had received no letters of support, no letters in acquisition. And again, there are some old notices of violation as it relates to. It currently being a vacant property, all of which would be addressed by the proposed project. Staff does recommend approval of all of these with conditions. Before we get to the specific questions from the applicants, again, this will require a final development plan, a final plat. The C of A at building permit stage after land entitlements. And again, I think what you're seeing is a little bit of confusion here because this is a multifamily. Project, proposed project, and we have a couple of multifamily design guidelines in here that probably could have been tweaked from their standard conditions. So I'll try to address those on a one-on-one basis. As it relates to number five, my recommendation would be to add a, add language that just exclude the historic retaining wall that keeps the condition as is. For number six, staff would recommend we keep that as is. We do think that a sidewalk needs to be built on the north side of Gilmore. If you look three, two, if you look over one block. To the west, there is a sidewalk on the north side of Gilmore. Hope there is to connect that someday. So this would be the beginning of reconnecting that again, I think if we wanted to. If the, if the vacant lot that is planning, proposed to be planted into a second parcel. Whenever that would get developed, they would build a sidewalk and then we would have about a half a block gap to get to the rest of that sidewalk. So staff, again, obviously this was. I think I used to have a sidewalk. I believe there is still a sidewalk underneath all that gravel. It probably is buried deep at this point. Considering the edge of that building, that's probably the last time it did have a sidewalk. If not, then we still feel strongly that a sidewalk needs to be there. So we would recommend we keep that condition as is. As it relates to number eleven, uh, again, a condition of approval for. Uh, related to the three entitlements, not necessarily code. We feel strongly that this is a walkable neighborhood and that these types of uses should include. Although it's not a code requirement for, uh, for bike racks yet. It is something we've talked about planned and have applied, not too dissimilar from. You know, a bike rack at a, at a Bottega that we heard earlier this evening. And then for, so we would recommend we keep number eleven as is. And then same thing for number fourteen, recognizing that it's a historic structure, we could probably either. Eliminate fourteen, but just like number five, I would recommend that we just admit that section to. Exempt the, the historic building components of it, but keep it as is because it is important. Again, there's. There's things that could happen in the future where buildings were at, where this building could be added on to, and we could address it at that point. But these are the kind of carryover conditions that I think inform those future decisions that are important to have in the documentation today, whether we specifically use them or not. So I would recommend we keep fourteen and amend it appropriately based on the applicant's points. So we wouldn't require them to paint the. Downspouts of a historic building to match. If there was an addition in the future, this is the thing that would point to that. And recognize that was an issue in this case and it could carry over to future projects, generations as needed, if it ever happens. And then as it relates to the. Stairs on Gilmore, uh, either. Missed it or it didn't get included. But that condition of approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals that was eliminated, I'm not seeing in this change of zone, master plan amendment. And plat staff report, so. I mean, I guess we could add it back in if you all felt that was necessary. I think staff would be addressing this a little bit when it comes back for a C of A for, um, building permits. But again, I think the short of it here is, uh, whether it's related to the. Plating and where that property line is, whether it's related to it being a historic feature or not, the grounds are the existing site. So staff feels that that should be the, the parcel, so we can keep the integrity of the old school together. And we're not cutting into the former sites of that site, whether in the future. I think while we are excited about the idea that there's a second parcel being parceled off here for future development, there's not a project before us. So. We don't know what we're talking about, really. So I don't necessarily think making determination on the property line and saying a few feet over is going to inhibit it, it'll make it smaller. That doesn't mean it can't happen. It's a design solution, quite frankly, and from at least my perspective. So I think if we wanted to add in the Gilmore stairs back. We could, if we left it silent here, I think it would get addressed elsewhere. In the review, uh, specifically the C of A, but I think to be consistent. With staff's perspective, we would ask the planning commission to add it back in. The condition number three from the Board of Zoning Appeals should be in this one and we should keep it here. Our perspective is. If trash builds up on the site, anywhere else on the site, are you not going to pick it up? Is it just because it's down in this one location, you're, and it's a kind of a trap for debris that you won't clean that up? So that's like a maintenance issue, I think, more for us. From a safety perspective, again, we think a chain link fence across the whole thing, if you don't want it to be an access point is fine. But it's maintaining that existing site. Circulation retaining wall. And other egress, whether it is used as an access point or not, is kind of irrelevant. But keeping the site as is from a historic perspective is important. So we would recommend that you have that, have that condition back in, in fact. And we could address it as later. As it relates to the plat, uh, I don't think we should be talking about that at this point. I think we can figure that out at final plat. Generally, we agree that there's two parcels here where that line is. I think we can figure out between preliminary plat today as is and final plat in the future.
Questions for staff? I'm still confused where you're at with stairs. They want to, they want to fill them in and build up the wall, right? And you want to leave them open and then put a gate at the front. And so it's a, it's a set of stairs to nowhere.
It is a part of the historic environs of the site. So we think it's important to keep it as is. If this, if this turns into a chain link fence at the top of the stairs. Or even at the bottom of the stairs, so that you can't actually access it. Yeah, it'll probably be a trap for leaves and such, but. You could make that argument for any corner of.
We think that looks better than to build it up and have the stone retaining wall all the way across and. Because of the original site.
Correct.
Other questions for staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, I'm still confused about the stairs. So, so we're talking about putting a chain link fence across.
They're talking about filling these stairs in and just adding in a retaining wall. So two things. You will never be able to rebuild that wall as is today, right? So it'll clearly be something else. Maybe that's stone, maybe it's whatever, that's fine. And then you fill it in, that's one thing. For the integrity of the site and its environs. Staff believes there's a solution here that's cheaper than filling it in and building a new retaining wall. And that's building a fence across it and just not letting anybody in there. But it keeps the site in perpetuity as a historic integrity for its historic.
My, my concern is that the, the aesthetics of it. You know, if you, if you fill it in, obviously that, that's going to be different than the original wa- rock wall. But, but if you put a chain length fence across there, that's. That I, I don't. That's still, uh, going to impact the architectural appearance of the building. You're, you're gonna go drive by there and see a fence with a chain link fence or stairs with a chain link fence at the top of it. Besides any other things, I don't, I don't think that really enhances the appearance.
Is there an opportunity to clarify the two things we're choosing between? Because I don't think one of them is, um, a correct description.
Let's, since we're all confused, yes, go ahead and allow, go ahead.
Okay, so what historically has, what has been approved from SHIPO and the National Park Service and the Landmark Commission? Was that three steps, the bottom three steps will remain and they will be restored. And they will have a presence and show that stairs did exist and will not ignore the fact that there were stairs. In that position. And then it's been proposed to and agreed upon to have a wall at the top of the three steps. The wall will look similar to the stone wall, um, but it will not. Look exactly like it, which is, um, going along with the. Desires of the historic community, um, that you can tell new from old. So I just wanted to clarify that we are not choosing between demolishing the entire stair. Or leaving the entire stair. I, I hope, if you have further questions, um, please ask.
Commissioner Isles, and then we'll go to Commissioner Connolly.
Quick question. So where the stairs are is what? They are on Gilmore. So if you're wanting to reorient the building. Wouldn't you want to keep those stairs as like the grand entrance anyway?
That makes sense because if you see the picture. They're requesting to have a sidewalk in that green area that it doesn't exist today. So if we really build the sidewalk and we give the stairs proper life. And we keep the sign up on the top of this, you know, is Gil, I mean, we just go. Basically, we will provide the stairs as a real entrance. Therefore, we will like to have the entrance on Gilmore instead of the driveway that is today, you know, along Tenth Street. And if that is, you know, that will solve the problem with the stairs, the sidewalk. And the west wall for the ten feet. That we are asking as a variance.
Okay, I'm going to go to Commissioner Connolly in just one second, but Gunner, can we do that all here tonight? I mean.
No, we wouldn't want to hold that over.
I was gonna say. We're redoing this project and I don't care to do that tonight.
The change of zone functions as the preliminary development plan, which kind of maps out all the egress and ingress and egress on the site. So if that were to change between now and then, they'd have to come back and do a preliminary development event if you approved it tonight. So I mean, if that's the direction they want to move to address the plating issue. We could, we might want to just hold it over for thirty days, but I would, I would look to them if they want to do that or not.
Is that a preference?
I would like to, um, say for clarification. When you were talking about the access to the site. You are not proposing to change driveways. Could you speak to that part? Would the driveways remain?
Yeah, basically, I mean, today, Tenth Street has been historically the access to the parking area. And what we're saying, this has been always the main access to the school, the building. So if we go back and we make it, you know, real. Yeah, I mean, that will be the front entrance of the building. That should be the, the main address and Tenth Street will be parking area.
All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Connolly so I can get his question answered. Commissioner Connolly?
He was answered.
That was answered, all right, thank you. So Gunner, given what we're discussing, is a holdover appropriate?
If they want to effectively change the address of the property, what's the front door? Add this back in as potential pedestrian only access, then yes, I would recommend we hold over thirty days and figure this all out.
All right. Questions for staff? Are you in agreement with a holdover? Excuse me, are you in agreement to hold over and try to get this thing worked out, right? All right. The applicant is in agreement with a holdover as well. Commissioner Jones?
My question is then can we hold over, we would be holding over the master plan, the change of, change of zone and the plat, all three cases?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we do it in one vote or we have to have separate votes?
We hold over the entire case?
I think you can make one motion to hold over all of them.
All right, one motion will suffice.
I can do that when you're ready.
I would love this, love you too.
All right, I make a motion that we hold over for thirty days, cases MPL twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven. Change of zone case twenty twenty-three dash zero one two and plat case number twenty twenty-three dash zero one seven. Again, hold over for thirty days.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made to hold over the three cases, uh, tied to this, this application. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion is for a thirty day holdover to give the applicant and planning staff time to work through some details and come back to us and see us next month. Any discussion on the motion for holdover? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
He's rebitting his computer.
Yes, he is. Yeah, he went down.
Oh, okay. Moller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over all three applications until the October nine, twenty twenty-three meeting. For staff and the applicant to work out the issues discussed tonight passes seven in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you.
That takes us to our next application. Change of zone application COZ twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine. Change of zone from CP two planned general business district and R one single family district. To CP three planned commercial district to continue to operate an auto repair shop. As well as open a garage door installation shop at seventy-five eleven Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo. And the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
Hey, Ms. Makarinka, I've got you queued up, ready to speak, please. If you would, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Yekatina Makarinka. The address is seven, five, eleven, Leavenworth Road in Kansas City, Kansas.
And tell us what you'd like to do.
Uh, we currently have a body shop at our property and we want to start a garage door business. So, um, in order to do so, we need to get the whole property rezoned to C three. Currently, we have the front of the property, um, zoned as C two and the back is zoned residential.
Hey, anything else?
We would like to keep both businesses, um, garage door business and the body shop. With auto sales and whenever our garage door, um, business goes better and expands. Then we probably would shut down the body shop.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to staff, get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Planning and Design. Again, what we have here is a, a change of zone as it relates to a legal non-conforming auto repair shop. This is one of those ones that's been around consistently long enough that, uh, in twenty fifteen, when we updated the code to require a bunch of different requirements. This was an already operated business, so they've carried on. What's happened though is because they are adding a second business, if you will, to the site. Um, what's happened though is because they are adding a second business, if you will, to the site. That requires some site improvements that trigger some commercial design guidelines. So there's kind of this middle ground where we have an opportunity to improve the site based on code without pulling an SUP because it will not expand the auto repair business, right? Um, if it was to expand that auto repair business, it would trigger SUP. So we worked with the applicant diligently to make sure that that, those things weren't happening in the site plan. But uh, real quick, just for a little bit of background here, uh, this is in the comprehensive plan area in the midtown right off of Nor uh uh Leavenworth Road. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are notices of violation on this property as it relates to the maintenance of the property, weeds, trash, things of that nature. And so I think those need to be addressed and uh maintained not too atypical for the use and those kinds of code violations being targeted. But really what we're doing here is we're also correcting a split zoned parcel, which is bad planning practice. So you can see in this picture that the intent here was to keep all the commercial businesses up against Leavenworth Road, even though some of those commercial properties go deep into the residential neighborhoods to the south. This one in particular goes pretty far deep. So all of this building expansion that occurred in the R1 zone was because they didn't follow split zoning. Uh, and so to change it to C3 not only allows the use of the new business, the garage door installation, uh, but it also turns all of this to C3. Now to match the intent of the split zoning, which again staff believes is bad practice, uh, but to match that intent, what we've asked is to freeze all of the current commercial property as is and then do some landscaping and buffering specifically to the west, um, but a little bit to the east as well on this property line and for this guy over here. So basically do some additional landscaping and screening around where the business has expanded further south into the property than it probably should have into that split zoning. This is why you don't do split zoning because stuff like this happens all the time and you got to figure this out, so. So with that, uh, staff does recommend approval with conditions. Again, I've noted some of those conditions as it relates to commercial design guidelines. There are a couple of typos in here that I wanted to address very quickly. So we would also want to uh eliminate condition number 13 and 16. Those are standard conditions for a different permit type that made it in here or didn't get removed. I apologize for that. And we also want to amend condition number 18 to take special use permit. So if we could remove those two, amend that one, the rest of the conditions um should be okay as is.
Eliminate 13, 16 and amend 18?
Correct.
Okay, questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve change of zone case number 2023 dash 019, subject to staff stipulations and comments, including the elimination of conditions number 13 and 16, along with the amendment of condition number 18.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Janet, you've got all the details?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone 19, subject to the revised conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on September 28th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications that we're going to hear together. Master plan amendment MPL 2023 dash 011, Alex Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting. Master plan amendment from residential to community commercial central area plan at 2324 Grandview Boulevard. Change of zone application COZ 2023 dash 022, Alex Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting. Change of zone from CPO Plan Non Retail Business District to CP1 Planned Limited Business District to operate a retail candy store at 2324 Grandview Boulevard. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 11, 2023, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo, the notices to property owners, the letter in support from Paul Soptick Jr. that was read at the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case? Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Elliott, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Uh, welcome back and uh again, give us your name and address and tell us what you're gonna do here.
Yep, Alex Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting, 14500 Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas. Um, again, this is a uh building that is supposed to be renovated. Um, and is in need of a change of zone from CP0 to CP1 to allow for uses retail, um specifically selling candies. Uh, as was previous mentioned, the um variance for parking was approved um along with the conditions of um certain items, including a bike rack that will be provided. And uh, some neighbors have uh given their approval of the project and we ask for the um planning commission's approval of the rezon.
All right, thank you. We just have a clarification. Are we running a candy store? Are we running a warehouse? What are we, what are we running out of this location?
My understanding is that it, i- it is a candy store. Um, the language used by Paul in the email kind of made it sound like he used the word warehouse. Um, I would not use that word. Um, our understanding is that it is a um like a storefront for selling candy.
All right, thank you. We just needed, we, we just had a couple of um questions about it afterwards. Okay, questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll go to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. This case is being heard in conjunction with both the 2023 dash 036, a parking variance that was approved earlier this evening, as well as master plan amendment 2023 dash 011. Again, as the applicant noted, this is an existing retail um business, uh retail location that's been vacant for quite some time. In the central area plan, staff has received no support, no opposition. Again, there are a couple of notices of violation related to the structure, all of which should be addressed uh with the building permit and uh attendant improvement finish uh with the proposed use. Staff recommends approval with conditions including street trees, bike racks and some standards, commercial design guidelines.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll need two motions, one on the master plan and one for change of zone. Commissioner Jones?
I make a motion that we approve master plan amendment 2023 dash 011, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made to approve the master plan amendment made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ernst, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Sorry, I've got done mute. Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Miller? Miller?
He was back?
Miller?
Uh, Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of master plan amendment MPL 2023 dash 011 passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And now we'll need one on change of zone. Commissioner Jones?
Making a motion to approve change of zone case 2023 dash 022, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made to approve by Commissioner Jones on the change of zone, seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ 22, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on September 28th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Uh, Janet, um Commissioner Miller lost his internet connection. He's trying to get the hamster back on the wheel and he'll be back with us in a minute.
Okay, that sounds good. Our next application is a change of zone application COZ 2023 dash 023, Alex Elliott with Atlas Land Consulting. Change of zone from R1 Single Family District to AG Agriculture District for agricultural uses, including the keeping of cattle at 3308 North 75th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 11, 2023, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application? Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Elliott, you're on. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Alex Elliott uh with Atlas Land Consulting, 14500 Parallel Road, Unit R, Baser, Kansas. Um, yes, we have a uh rezone um for using a property for agricultural uses. Um, there's planned to be a shelter placed on the property um for the cattle that will be had. Um, again, we'll be working with Conservation District to apply any of their recommendations. Um, from our neighborhood letters that were sent out, we had uh one neighbor who is sort of catty corner to the northwest reply that they were in support of it. Um, their property is downstream of this property. Um, and then an adjacent neighbor um spoke out um in opposition to it citing the reason being for um, yeah, particular problems with flies from the cattle. I'd just like to note that the shelter that will be placed on the property um will be placed a great distance from that property owner's property line. It'll be more central to the property. Um, so an area, you know, the area that the cattle will be fed and congregate and things like that will be uh a great distance from that property line. I don't know the exact number, probably 800 feet or more um away. Um, so I'd just like to, to note that. Um, but yes, uh the, um per the Conservation District's recommendations, um fences will be placed to keep cattle out of tree stands and obviously on the property um and a shelter for winter pen area.
And questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, we have a change of zone from R1 to AG for agricultural purposes. This is in the comprehensive plan area in Midtown North Neighborhood. Uh, other than the neighborhood meeting as noted by the applicant's representative, we've received no letters of support or opposition that are in the notices of violation on the property. It's about a little over a 16 acre site. The one thing I will note is it is abutting a other case that we've had that has had its own uh enforcement issues. So this is one that we took particular interest in to make sure that we buttoned it up as much as possible. Um, specifically, we worked with the Conservation District and then we had all the conditions of approval. Uh, if you recall, we had some enforcement activity off of Palmer Road Drive for the abutting property. They were essentially using that property uh for their commercial business, not for agricultural purposes on the site. And so um we uh went through that quite a bit with the applicant and their representative. Um, they got the conservation plan with the Conservation District. Looks like we're gonna go with uh five cattle here. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve change of zone 2023 dash 023, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Is it okay to be second chair on this one, Commissioner Jones? Okay, he, he jumped in front of you there. All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, did Mr. Miller get back on with us yet?
Yes, yes, he has.
Oh, Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone application 23, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on January, excuse me, September 28th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that now takes us to our special use permit applications. First one is SP 2023 dash 017, William Walker Jr. with Walker Real Estate Investments LLC. Special use permit for a short term rental in one of the four plex units will only be used for short term rental when the long term rental unit is vacant at 15 South 17th Street, number two. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 11, 2023, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker? William Walker? William Walker? Mr. Walker, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Are you there?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you, sir. William Walker, uh 15 South 17th Street, uh, Unit Number Two.
Hey, go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do here.
At 15 South 17th Street, Unit Number Two, it's one unit of four. Uh, I would like to make a short term rental there when uh there's no long term or midterm uh guest in the unit. Uh, so that's my um business idea for the, for that particular unit.
And so you're gonna be doing how many units in this building?
It's a four plexo, four units, three of the units are long term and this one uh would just be utilized as short term uh rental, again, when I'm not using it as a midterm.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant?
I do.
Commissioner Isles?
So I understood from previous meetings that you could not do both. You can either use it as a short term rental or you can use it as a long term rental, but not both. Is that correct, Gunner?
One clarification, that did not make it into the code or ordinances.
Okay, forget I said it.
Other questions? All right, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Please come to the microphone or raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Name is Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, we have a special use permit for a short term rental. This is non owner occupied. This is one of three short uh units, one of four units, excuse me, and an existing legal nonconforming fourplex. And I'll get to that here in a second. This is in the central area plan, just south of Central Avenue. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Um. I think staff struggled a little bit with this recommendation, um but ultimately landed on a recommendation of approval. There is no off street parking for this building at all. Um, so there is no off street parking for the short term rental, which is one of the standards in the new ordinance. Um, I think this is definitely one of those things that we're going to add to uh the conversation when we have our annual review of the short term rental ordinance next May, if not sooner. Uh, but because any tenant of that space, short, mid, or long range, would not have any off street parking. We went forth with a recommendation of approval. To be completely honest with you, we probably could have done a denial with the same with and had just as much justification. So we're a bit on the fence with this one. Uh, and so we do defer to the wisdom of the planning commission and ultimate board of commissioners here. But in this case, staff does recommend approval with conditions for one year.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve special use permit two zero two three dash zero one seven, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Isles.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P seventeen for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again September twenty eighth, seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next special use permit application is S P twenty twenty three dash zero one nine. Redeemed Christian Church of God. Special use permit to keep a shipping container in the parking lot of the church at eighty one fifty five Parallel Parkway. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Okio, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name, address, and tell us what you want to do.
My name is Timothy Okio. I'm the pastor of the Redeemed Christian Church of God. My address is eight one five five Parallel Parkway. And um we uh we have complied with every requirement. We have had a town meeting, we've done everything. And what we are asking for is just to keep a container whereby we keep our church equipment. And this is not on the parking lot. I kept hearing parking lot. This is not on the parking lot. This container is situated at a corner on our church uh premises, not interfering with parking in any way or manner. So all we are asking for is to keep equipments that we have gathered together to start new churches. And um so that is why we are here tonight. And I read the staff report and I saw that they have included all kinds of items that had nothing to do with this uh container. I've seen that. All such things have been added, and I don't know why this was done.
Okay, Mr. Okio, those are conversations that you needed to have with the planning department, okay? Not here tonight. So if we pass your request, the things that are in that report are going to be things that you're going to be held to. Is that, you understand that?
So my question to you is that this wasn't the reason why uh
Then, sir, what you need to request is a holdover and you need to work that out with the planning staff and not take up our time this evening. Because we're not going to hear your case and redo it tonight. Okay?
Okay.
What would you like to do?
To keep the container on the place where it's at.
And you're going to, you're going to comply with, you're going to comply with the report that you've been issued, correct?
Yes, I will.
The answer is yes or no. You're going to comply with what's in that report, or you can do a holdover and you can work something out differently with the staff and come back to us.
And what would be the implication of that, sir?
Say it again.
What would be the effect of that side effect of that?
Still don't understand what you'd prefer to do. Do you want to hold over to work it out? Or do you want to live with what's in the staff report if we approve your request? Those are your two choices tonight. What's your choice, sir? We've got to move on tonight.
Well, I will accept.
There's no other question, sir. You have two choices. You're either yes, I'm going to live with what's in the report if we if we uh grant your request or no, you want to review it with the planning department. We'll give you another thirty days to work that out. Two choices. What is it going to be?
I will review. I will hold over.
You want to hold over. Okay, Commissioner Conley, do you have a question for this applicant before we look at a holdover? Commissioner Conley, oh, there you go.
I have none.
All right, thank you. Okay, the applicant is agreeable to a holdover. Any, is there anybody in the audience that came tonight that wanted to speak to this case that we can hear before we move on? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Please come to the microphone then. Need to have your name and address, please.
Early Wine, and I'm at one four four two three North one hundred and forty fifth Street.
Okay, can you talk a little closer so we can hear you? Thank you.
Lisa Early Wine, and I'm at one four four two three North one hundred and forty fifth Street in Baser.
Okay.
I'm the director of property management for Block Real Estate, and we are the management company for the adjoining shopping center.
Okay.
Uh, they are in California, and I believe he's listening via Zoom.
Okay.
Um, the problem that we have, um especially with the container, it it may not take up specific parking spaces, but it could uh it you, there could be some parking there and so and I don't have all the documents. We're still trying to to track some of the things down. But since about nineteen ninety or nineteen eighty five, um there the owner, there was a bank, it was a bank before at the shopping center. And there was some sort of a perpetual agreement in place that the the bank paid the shopping center thirty six hundred dollars a year um for access to the entries. And it for years it was paid, and then for whatever reason that the pastor decided he wasn't going to pay it.
That is not correct.
Okay, you're done, sir.
And
Well, I'm going to go ahead and stop you because unfortunately, I think what you're wanting to discuss is a parking agreement.
Well, not, no, that's not all of it.
Okay, I'm going to give you just a little bit of latitude.
Stop with the parking agreement. The other part is um they do use our parking lot, which is why I brought the parking lot agreement. They do use our parking lot on Sundays for church. There were some people there on.
Again, no relevance to the shipping container. We're only here to talk about the shipping container. So if what you have to talk about is the shipping container, we'll hear it. So if that shipping container is parked in your parking lot, I'll listen to that. But anything else, I don't care anything about parking.
Okay, then I guess.
All right, I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off, but it has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight, which is just the shipping container. All right, thank you. And I'm sorry about that. Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Jones.
Chairman Carson, I want to make sure that the applicant knows that this is a temporary use. And my question is, how long is he planning uh to use this container for? So that that's clear.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll get that answer for you. Mr. Okio, do you understand that this is a temporary use if we were to approve your request at some time in the future that you understand it's for a maximum use only? It is not for a permanent solution for your storage needs. Mr. Keo. Need you to unmute yourself again.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. That was.
So you, you understand that if we were to approve your request, it is for a temporary use, it is not for a permanent storage solution?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. And you're still okay with a holdover to get it worked out?
Because the the b- business beside us, they have decided to include all kinds of manners which were in part of the initial thing in these, and I don't know why. And I know.
Okay, Mr. Keo, we're going to go back to your motion or for your request for a holdover so we can get this worked out, okay? Because we're not going to debate your case tonight. Okay, we're back to the case. The the applicant has agreed to a holdover. Can we get a motion for a holdover?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead, please.
I move to hold over our special use permit two zero two three dash zero one nine per the applicant's request.
Thank you. Motion for thirty day holdover made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Thank you. This will give the applicant opportunity to get fully understood what is expected of him um through this process. Commissioner Conley, discussion?
Well, I I guess it was a question, right? After the most second of the motion, I mean, I don't understand. I thought that's why we held it over before. What, am I correct? What's for him to get clear understanding?
Well, we don't have it.
This is Gunner, Director of Planning and Design. Staff have gone through the conditions of approval and the staff report with the applicant multiple times. We're not sure what the confusion is tonight um or the reason, or we don't believe there's necessary for a holdover. I think the short answer to Mr. Okio's question is when you're seeking a land entitlement, we try to bring the entire site up to compliance of which this project, this site is not. Um, so yes, there are conditions of approval related specifically to the screening and buffering and location of the storage container. Um, but he also has violations on the property. He has a prohibited pole sign. He's trying to put a sign on. And we told him multiple times, you can't have that sign and it needs to be removed, things of that nature. So that's perhaps what he's talking to. Everything else is standard condition stuff.
We have a motion on the floor for a holdover.
Just making a
All right, roll call, please.
Yes, I wasn't finished, but because Gunner jumped in.
You need further clarification from Gunner? Roll call, please, Janet.
Hey, I didn't finish. Hold up.
Well, I asked and you and you sat there and you were, you were.
No, I I my mic was the one off.
Okay, go ahead.
So Gunner's not recommending a holdover? Can you hear?
The reason for the holdover is to talk to staff again about the staff report. We can do that. The point I'm trying to make is we've done that multiple times already. We thought we had clarification.
All right, thanks.
All right. Push it on the floor for a holdover. Roll call, please.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Isles.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over special use permit nineteen for the applicant to get clarification from the staff on the conditions of approval passes eight in favor and none opposed.
All right, Mr. Keo, we're going to see you next month, but I hope that you get with the staff and get all your issues outlined before you come back before this body, okay? Thank you. Next case.
Special use permit application S P twenty twenty three dash zero two five, Mr. Kasim. Renewal of a special use permit, S P dash twenty twenty dash one oh two expired August fifth, twenty twenty three for an auto body repair shop at seventy seven forty four Clansus Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
But Mr. Chairman, I would note for the record that this application was held over from the July Planning Commission meeting for the applicant to address the sidewalk situation.
Yes, Mr. Kasim, are you in the audience tonight? Mr. Kasim. Have we heard from the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think there may have been a miscommunication at the July hearing. We tried, we held it over to October, but I think there was language that said, or excuse me, held it over for sixty days, which would have been today. But I think we stated it as October, so I think the applicant may I think he has until October. I would recommend we just hold over for thirty days.
Okay, let me see if there's anybody that came tonight. Is anyone in the audience? Did anyone come tonight to speak to this case? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Okay, seeing none. So your recommendation is for a holdover due to the confusion.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for Commissioner, or excuse me, for Director Hand on that clarification or request for a holdover? Okay, if not, I will entertain said said motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to hold over our special use permit two zero two three dash zero two five for thirty days.
And Gunner, that that is the clarification was for October. Okay. All right, motion is for holdover till the October meeting. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for holdover? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Isles.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over special permit twenty five until the October nine, twenty twenty three meeting passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit. S P twenty twenty three dash zero four zero. Christie D. Pretty. Special use permit to keep livestock at thirty four twenty five North Eighty Seventh Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Pretty, we've got you queued up, ready to go. Give us your name, please, and address.
Good evening. This is Larry and Christie Pretty at thirty four twenty five North Eighty Seventh Street. I had to read it. I almost forgot my address. Um. Um, I like to make one change here with what's shown on the screen. Um, she does no longer have a mini pony. So it could come off the list there.
Okay. So we just have chickens, the ducks and the goats.
Chickens, the ducks and the goats. She is the superintendent for the four H for the poultry and for the goats. And she brings children out here to show them how to do, um trim the goats' hooves and work with the chickens, work for the show of the goats and stuff for the four H fair. And uh we keep a lot of the the animals for the a lot of the four H children that don't have a place to keep them. Um, also, we work with the city sometimes when the large animal pick up, picks up a large number of chickens. She does the testing for the county for a lot of um the diseases for chickens to make sure they're not carrying some kind of disease to transmit to other animals. She also does it for area auctions and for the four H groups for testing. So this is kind of what she does. We've lived here thirty years. We've had them all for that thirty years. And the last several years, we've had the permit. We'd let it, we forget, we're old. I'm sorry. We're gonna make sure it's on the calendar this time. We didn't get it re-upped in time. So we'd like to see if we could please get the permit again.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is Director of Planning and Design. Again, we have an S U P for animals. This property is one point two acres, so not the minimum threshold, nor the appropriate zone category. Which is why we're here for the S U P. This is in the comprehensive plan area, again, sort of the north midtown, north Leavenworth Road area. We received no support, no letters of opposition, and there are no there's a violation. As the applicant mentioned, they did make this lapse, so this is not a renewal. This is effectively a new one, which is why we're kind of starting back at at two years. Staff recommends approval for those two years. There is a standard condition in there as it relates to reaching out to the conservation district. So I just would want to make sure that that conservation plan is in place for a one point two acre parcel for this number of animals. That conservation plan will then dictate how many animals should be on this property. So it's a condition of approval. We don't have any issues with this. They've been doing this for a while now. But we would want to make sure that that conservation plan is in place accordingly, and that will set the number of animals for this specific site.
Okay, so the number of animals requested is not the number of animals that are out there right now. That's just the number. That's the capacity.
The number of animals needs to be reflected in the conservation plan and whatever it says is the number. We didn't get that in time. They're very backed up. But because the Purdees have done this previously, had a conversation plan previously, but because it lapsed, it's not valid anymore. So we just want to make sure that this is me doubling down to make sure they go get that conservation plan as one of their conditions of approval as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? And we'll stand for a motion when ready.
Motion.
Commissioner Isles?
Commissioner Isles, I recommend approval of petition SP twenty twenty-three dash zero four zero based on staff stipulations.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Isles. That's for two years, correct? Two years, Commissioner Isles? Yes, thank you. Is that a second Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And subject to staff stipulations and comments, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Isles?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP forty for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Pretty. This will be heard once again September twenty-eighth, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty-three dash zero four two. Matt Thomas with Firm Foundation Ministries, special use permit to operate a group dwelling unit at seventeen twenty-three Quandero Boulevard. The former application SP twenty twenty dash zero seven six expired December tenth, twenty twenty-two. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, go ahead. Give us your name and address. Please tell us what you'd like to do.
Yes, my name is Matthew Thomas. I live at one two seven one four West Seventy-Sixth Street in Shawnee, Kansas. And I represent Firm Foundation Ministries. What we do is we provide faith-based housing for men that come out of incarceration, that come out of shelters, that come out of just bad situations. And so we give them a place. We help line them up with a job. We have transportation to get them to the job and we help them become successful so that in six to nine months or even a year, they are ready to become self-sustaining in the public and be able to be just living a good life.
Okay, how many people will be living there?
There would be seven living there.
Okay, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I guess my question is, so what type of offenders or prior offenders are these people?
Just the these are men that have been incarcerated or that that have felony convictions with all kinds of past.
Okay. So is it gonna be sometime somebody there ensuring that they are, I guess, in their units or is there anyone with that has any type of child endangerment or child molestation or sexual crimes?
So we we do accept people that do have some sexual cases. That's not always the case, but we also have somebody that is on, we have a house leader in place who is in charge of that location that makes sure that the men are are there. We have a curfew. We do random UAs, random breath lizers. And so we make sure that that where they're living is safe and then the community around it is safe. And we also partner very closely with KDOC and other agencies, including the federal probation system, to help these men be successful.
Okay, now, why did you choose this neighborhood? Because I mean, a lot of people don't choose things on Quandero. Why did you choose this neighborhood?
So to be brutally honest, I was friends with Pastor Bailey when he owned the property for Love Outreach and Love Fellowship. And I really fell in love with the building because part of our goal is we want to take men and 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 women, obviously not at the same property, but help them become active in the communities where men and women with that type of background will have the most impact to be able to show people that there's other options besides drugs and guns and other things that are available to them, unfortunately, in the community.
Now, you know that the area is known for the things that you're trying to keep them avoided from, right?
Oh, I I absolutely do. I I one hundred percent do. I have friends. I'm 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 good friends with Mr. Wilson up at Wilson's Pizza. Pastor Bernard and and his wife Trina. So so I am I am more than well aware. And that was part of the reason that we really wanted to pick that location was the opportunity to do that because we also have planted a church down on the first on the first floor because there's a church there to to really reach out to the community. And we've been able to do that by not only providing, we have the Harvester's bus that comes once a month, but we've provided backpacks and we provided furniture drives to the community. And we've tried to do the best to really wrap around the community, being in the community to 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 provide some different things.
I guess I guess my only issue is is how close is the school?
Uh, there's there's not a school real close to that place at all.
It's not one on Eighteenth Street? Northeast?
Eighteenth and what?
On Eighteenth and it's it's called Northeast School. No, not Northeast, but. What is it?
Northwest Middle, well, it's Carl Bruce now.
It's called what?
Carl Bruce Middle School. It's the old Northwest.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's a school real close.
Uh, I I would say it's that close because I mean, it in a couple block radius, there's really no schools or or anything around that area. And and most of the guys have transportation or they they catch the bus and they go to work. And I mean, we haven't really had any problems at all.
Are you already keeping them?
Yeah, so so we we found out about the special use permit process after the fact. And so we've been up and operating for about, I think, a year, just about a year. And so as soon as we found out that we had to do it, we went ahead and followed all the procedures, got the inspections and have been trying to walk through the process.
All right, thank you. No more questions.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jones?
I just wanted a clarification confirmation of a question I think I heard Commissioner Conley ask. So you said that sexual predators are would be staying at this property?
No, I did not say sexual predators are staying at the property. There are men that have been charged with sexual offenses, non-predatory, that 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 have lived there.
I would, this is gonna head back to planning and resign. I would just caution the chamber, the commissioners with their questions. This is a protected class. So you can't deny that for that reason. If that's where this line of questioning is going.
It's not a protected class under what what part of the Constitution? Was under, it's not a protected class. It's not a protected class. Where where in the Constitution is the protected class? Under Fourteenth Amendment?
Which which class are you referring to? Are you talking about sexual predator?
Yeah, I'm just saying that he said it's a protected class. It's not a protected class.
No, and I agree with you. Legal counsel?
It's not.
What does legal counsel say?
Where I'm going to legal.
I'm not sure that that was that was the correct phrase. I think maybe Gunner, you're probably saying that that can't be a grounds for denial in and of itself. Correct.
We asking questions?
Yeah, I got too much discussion going on the side. Legal?
I'd I'd have to check on it, but I I think there's a lot of terminology. There's so there's there was a phrase of sexual predator. I think under the sexual under the sex offender registry act, I think there's a definition of what a sexual offender is. It's gonna be a conviction for certain offenses. I'd I'd have to take a look and see if that can be a grounds for denial. I think that's probably.
Under under the Fair Housing Act, you cannot discriminate housing based on someone's record.
Uh, I mean, no, this, I know for housing that too.
I'm not.
But what I'm saying is.
I'm not saying. Cautioning us to not get ourselves painted into a corner by asking certain questions or denying the case based on certain concerns. That's all I'm saying, that under the Fair Housing Act, you cannot deny somebody housing for their record.
That is not true. But because you can do a background check. So I'll move on.
All right. Other questions? Okay, good. Commissioner Isles, then we'll go to Commissioner Beth.
Um, I noticed that you've had some issues with trash. Have you guys got that worked out?
Yes, so we had issues with, as soon as we filed for it, the the gentleman came out and and said we needed to get rid of the vegetation on the back of the building. So we got rid of the vegetation on the back of the building. I cut it off. I put it to the side. I ended up with poison ivy for a week. And so the pile didn't get moved till a week later, but he came out and did the reinspection like in that interim week. But we got that taken care of. And the second one, I believe, over there was for the top of the garage. And what we're actually doing is building a deck on the top of the garage so that there is a place for the people that that live there to be able to have a spot to hang out. Yeah.
Did you get a permit for that?
They're they've actually filed. No, so they filed for the permit right now and they're doing that like right, right as we speak, there there should, yeah. So they're not building the deck. They're filing for the permits to build the deck.
And do you have a business license?
Um. Like in in what for the ministry? We have, we have a nonprofit. So we're not, we're not building the deck.
No, 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 but you're, I mean, this is a business, right? A group home? Would he need a business permit?
Rental permit.
A rental permit, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Beth? Do you have any other properties that you do the same thing to?
Yes, yes, we do. We actually have three homes in Wichita. We have one in Leavenworth, and then we have another special use permit application for a house that we have on Fifth Street down off of Quandero. And so we have a total of seven properties.
And how long have you been operating there?
For ten years.
And you just now figured out you need a special use permit?
Yeah, we've never had to file for a special use permit. Now, up here, you know, it it's different. And so we've had, we had our Fifth Street House in operation and had no idea about a special use permit. And so as soon as we, as soon as we found out, that's when we filed for both. And so we're actually supposed to talk about the Fifth Street House next month for the next month's planning and zoning meeting.
Okay. Other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Come to the mic. Please give us your name and address, please.
My name's Will Stevens. My address is four eleven North Broadway, Leavenworth, Kansas. I am in support. Me and this man have have planted four churches in the Kansas City area. One there on Quandero, one in Lenexa, two in Lansing. These men that have been residing on Fourth Street have not been any issues in four years. These men have given back to their communities. They go out on Friday night and feed the homeless. I think give back. We've done furniture drives, backpack drives, have never had an issue. So I work for a nonprofit inside of Lansing Correctional Facility. I'm a support staff for Kansas Department of Corrections. And last year, I've been a reentry coordinator, working with these men coming out of prison. Each of these men that are coming to his house are going through our program, are being vetted, are being worked with. We're not just accepting anybody and putting them in this house. These men are serving alongside of us in the church and in the community. And these men are coming back, whether you approve this zoning for this house or not. They're gonna be released to this county. They're gonna be released, being prepared for release to our program and into his transitional living. Either way, they're gonna hit the street, either in the transitional house that my friend runs Firm Foundations, or they're being released homeless. Statistically, you don't have to worry about the sex offender that has already committed a crime, have been treated and sentenced. You have to worry about the men walking the streets that haven't been caught. Statistically, it's very, very, very low that these men will reoffend. So I'm absolutely in support of it. The decision that's made tonight isn't about zoning or housing. There are souls attached to this decision that's gonna be made. Men who will not have another place to go if this decision is denied. Men that may not have an opportunity to give back to their community, men who may not have an opportunity to come into true saving faith in Jesus Christ. So souls attached to this. It's not about a house or a building or a church. Our souls attached. I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, your name and address.
Good evening. Marcy Concater, forty-seven ten Hudson Road, Kansas City, Kansas. I've been with the, are with Kansas Department of Corrections for twenty-five years. Ten of those with unified government, adult and juvenile services, and now with the state. I'm the Assistant Director for Mentoring for Success with the State of Kansas the last fifteen years. So I just want to share with you that housing is our weakest link in Kansas City, Kansas. As a taxpayer for Kansas City, Kansas, and involved in the judicial sys system for twenty-five years, it's a huge issue. We've worked with firm foundations in the prison and out. So what we do with the men and women for these foundations are we start working with them on the inside. We focus on all ten criminogenic areas such as housing, documentation, food, clothing, jobs, transportation, getting to and from their parole meetings. This foundation works with the parole officers. So if there's a concern, the parole officer will go to the Firm Foundation House and work with the guys there. We have church communities that come in and do Bible studies and financial planning, all types of meetings within the Firm Foundation houses. This is not just a transitional house. This is an option for those coming out of prison to get an opportunity. To get an opportunity to start over, build a life, move on, and then give back to community. Just wanted to share that on behalf of Kansas Department of Corrections.
Thank you.
My name is Max Alcanner and I live at eight oh four North Main, Lansing, Kansas. Um, I was actually the first house lead for the Fifth Street when I released him pr- from prison. On September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Um, I now work for firm foundations. Um, and it's been a privilege to be able to help guys coming out the same way I did. And to be there for the guys in the same way others were for me. I also have a second job. I work at Tyson Foods where um, you know, I'd actually. I'd actually been addressed about becoming a supervisor. Um, this program is not just housing as others have said before me. This is a chance for other people to be able to restart their lives and become successful. I have two kids who are down in Texas, both their mom, and right now in my life, I'm trying to get myself in a position. So that way, when my kids are reintroduced in my life, I can be the father that I should have been from the beginning. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll close the public portion of the uh, meeting. We'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Plainer resign.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Connolly. Do you have a question for one of the speakers?
I, I, I did, but uh, I think they've already sat down, but.
Which one would you like to, to address?
I didn't know if you seen my hand. I, I'm fine. Did you see my hand?
I, I saw it after I switched screens, yes.
All right, no problem.
You good?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Plainer resign. Again, this is the special use permit for uh, a group home. This is in the northeast area plan, again, right off uh, Quandero. Staff has received both support and opposition. There are a couple notices of violation, which were discussed in the comments uh, earlier this evening. Uh, staff does recommend approval for two years. We would note that the original, it wasn't. I wouldn't necessarily think it could be classified as a group home, but the original transitional sort of emergency shelter was approved in twenty-eleven for two years. Um, it also came with a variance for no parking at the site, which stays uh, on the property and is still valid. So that is why there's no parking provided off-site, excuse me, off-street, onsite. Uh. Yep, that's perfect.
All right, questions for staff? Commissioner Isles? And I've got you, Commissioner Connolly, so I see your hand.
Commissioner Isles, um, so is the applicant aware of uh, stipulation three? That they have to have one staff member onsite at all times?
Yes, we are aware. And, and so we, we have a person that lives on, onsite. That has their own apartment in the front of the upstairs housing area.
Commissioner Connolly?
I guess my question is for Gunner. I mean, um, you said that they renewed, they had a permit in two thousand and eleven?
I'm saying that the previous owner had a similar use that was approved in twenty-eleven. So I think we were just trying to establish that. Uh, this is not too dissimilar from that previous approval.
Okay, so, but I heard somebody uh, give testimony that uh, they had been in effect since May of two thousand and nineteen. And haven't, they hadn't gotten a permit. They've been acting. Is that because we was unaware, even though they had gotten one before?
There are uh, Gunner, Director Plainer resign. Again, there's, there's two active applications. The one you're hearing tonight, another one you're here. Uh, hopefully next month. Uh, this one had been in operation for a little over a year before we made it to this point.
Okay, and so the requirements is, is that. One staff person be inside or in a unit adjacent to it?
I, I. The condition of approval reflects what the business plan essentially is from Mr. Thomas, which is to have one staff person onsite at all times.
And, and just, we have one at the other property also that lives there, that's onsite.
So is this staff member uh, certified or anything like that? What does it mean by? I mean, I'm asking this question because this is in my district.
Okay, so, so the, the men that live there are, are really fully capable of living on their own. Now, in the house, we have a first aid kit and a station to where. They can, if there's an emergency, they can take care of what they need to. They have the capacity to call the authorities or the paramedics. Or anything like that. So there's, there's things in place for them to be able to take care of what needs to take care of. And we're working on getting Narcan stations in just, just because for safety and because it's the reality of the world we live in.
All right. Uh, Gunner? Gun, Gunner?
Yes.
I don't know if you noticed, but I, I do work for Housing Authority and a sex offender cannot move in any public housing. So I just wanted to make sure you do that. Any hood housing, a sex offender cannot move in there.
Again, I don't think that's exactly the point I was trying to make, uh, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, let's see, I've got Commissioner Jones.
My question is, uh, in the staff report, it talks about the applicant's response being, we do not operate a clinical group home. We operate a faith-based traditional housing program. Uh, my question is, how? Under what circumstances, what prerequisites, uh, are the uh. Men that are chosen to live there? How is that decision made?
Well, thank you, and, and I'll walk you through the process. We have about a twelve-page application that each man has to. That each man has to fill out to come in. They have to list the history. They have to sign a disclosure of information. So that we can talk to the parole officers and the facility that they're currently in. Um, and honestly, some of our men have, have not ever even been in trouble. They've just fell on some hard times and ended up in a shelter. Or they've had a drug problem and end up in a rehabilitation center. And so after we do that, we look at their DRs, excuse me, their disciplinary reports. We talk to the unit teams of where they're at while they're incarcerated. We work real closely with parole to make sure that we're not missing something. That, that might be there. And through that process, that's how we. That's how we come up with who comes in the house. And then over, and that's just our basic. That's just our absolute basic process. Over on the Quandero House, it's a little, or the Quandero Building, it's a little bit different. So we run a leadership program inside of Lansing Penitentiary, excuse me, Lansing, Lansing Correctional Facility. Where we are training leaders to come out and be successful in healthy and leadership, to be able to go out. And to find what God's called them to do and to be successful, especially in the communities like there are right around Quandero. To where we can start growing and building healthy relationships and healthy, healthy. Healthy lifestyles inside of those areas. And so these are actually leaders that we've worked with. And so we have sometimes one to two, even more, one to two to seven years of relationship built with these men before they even. Hit the street.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, just one point of clarification. As the crow flies from parcel to parcel, it's about seventeen hundred feet to Bruce Elementary, uh, to Mills schools.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Ernst?
As it is a necessary evil in today's world, and they've done it for a year and we didn't even know it. I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission, recommend approval of petition SP two oh two-three dash oh four-two. Subject to all staff stipulations.
Motion made by approval by Commissioner Ernst for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst? Aye. Jones?
Aye.
Did you say no?
That's correct.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Connolly?
No.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit forty-two for two years. Subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on September twenty-eighth, seven P M. Before the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero four-four. Eublister Gonzalez, renewal of a special use permit to operate a car audio installation business. At thirteen fifteen State Avenue. Current special use permit SP twenty twenty dash one hundred. Just expired on May sixth, twenty twenty-three. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the windup echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, are you in the audience? Mr. Gonzalez? I don't see anybody online with that name. Janet, can we go ahead and move it to the end of the agenda?
Yes. Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash zero four-seven. Lance Pierce, special use permit to operate a short-term rental at thirty-nine seventeen Fisher Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map.
Prove that shit.
For.
Okay.
For the air, for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the notice in the windup echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, oh, go ahead.
Uh, my name's Lance Pierce. Uh, my address is thirty-nine seventeen Bell Street, Kansas City, Missouri. Um, and today I'm seeking a short-term rental license on thirty-nine seventeen Fisher Street.
Anything else you'd like to add about your property?
Um, no, I mean, this is my, I don't, if there's any information that you need, I'm happy to offer it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
Uh, it looks like you allow pets. Do you have a fenced yard?
Yes, it's chain link fence and it surrounds the entire backyard.
And um. How long would it take you to get from where you live to this property?
Hmm, probably four and a half minutes.
And do all the neighbors have your contact information in case there's any issues?
Yes, um, as part of the process of the city council, we send out letters to every property that's two hundred feet from the property. On that paper is our contact information so that they can contact us at any time.
Do you actually go to the neighbor's house and knock on the doors? I mean, at least one on either side.
That is not a requirement.
Um, but we do know them and they have my number and um, you know, we walk the neighborhood multiple times. You've seen me at the last meeting. Um, we had the other three um, in this neighborhood. Um, so we are in this neighborhood quite a bit, specifically because, um, you know, we're always patrolling them and taking out trash on the week. Um, every week. And so we're on the property, someone's staff members on the property at least once a week.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of our opposition? Yes, ma'am, your name and address?
Kelly White, four four one zero Francis Street, and I want to speak in opposition of uh, short-term rentals in the area. Um, I'm sure everyone here knows that there's plenty of evidence to suggest that short-term rentals are having a negative impact on the current housing crisis. Um, in our community and communities across the nation and in fact, other countries. Um, many U S cities, as well as cities in other countries, are implementing much stricter guidelines and actually even better banning them altogether. Uh, while a policy in Wyandotte County was certainly needed and our curtain or, our current ordinance is designed to allow fewer homes. To be used for short-term rentals, there is still a housing problem within our community, and it's a problem that requires immediate attention. Our ordinance has a section that states short-term rentals are needed and necessary by local and visiting populations. And while I do not have firsthand knowledge of all of the neighborhoods in Wyandotte County, I can say that the neighborhoods of Hanover Heights. Spring Valley, Frank Rushton, and very close to this neighborhood, um, that there are three hotels within a two-mile radius. So um, that's where visitors can stay if they want to visit, um, our, those three neighborhoods I mentioned and this one. Um. We, meaning the current and future residents of these three neighborhoods, shouldn't have to be subjected to the impact of short-term rentals. Because investors have found a way to make a significant amount of money. Housing people long-term and affordably should be more important, of more importance to our community than an investor who is looking for a profit. Rather than fostering neighborhood connections. So I am in fact opposed to this um, project as it is close to the neighborhoods that I mentioned here.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Uh, Gil Penthar, forty-one seventy-eight Cambridge. I'm uh, president of Hanover Heights in Rosedale. Um, as the applicant mentioned, there, uh, you know, there were several uh, short-term rentals approved. Last month and, you know, I think there, there were three on tonight's agenda. One was removed from Hanover Heights. It's withdrawn uh, because of the opposition to it. So the applicant decided not to move forward with it, but what I want to bring to your attention is that. With the result of adopting regulations back in April or whenever it was. Um, the, we're seeing the impact or the result of uh, regulations. Uh, that are different from Casey Mo to KCK. And what's happened since Casey Mo said, no, we're gonna allow these in single-family residential. Investors are looking at areas of Rosedale, areas of Strawberry Hill. Other areas that there's a need for visitor housing. And opportunities to buy in to neighborhoods like Hanover, like Spring Valley. And um, change the, change the fabric of those neighborhoods. And by that, I mean, uh, more um, tourist traffic, meaning. Not just renters that, that are there for a year, but changing renters every week, every fifty-two weeks, we're gonna get impacted by this. And so what we're seeing right now is investors buying homes in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods in Rosedale. Because they know they can't do it in Missouri. They, they can apply for it here. And it's up to you guys and the commissioners to understand that, that dynamic. So I implore you to, if, if you approve any further STRs. To, to really look at the neighborhood and where they are at, meaning are they mid-block? Are they on the edge of the neighborhoods? Are they right in the heart of the neighborhood? You know, there, there are a lot of things, I think, that make common sense of. Why an STR shouldn't be located in a certain area. Ask those common. Ask those common questions of yourselves and, um, I think that's all I need to say on this application. I, I do recommend denial of this one in Rosedale because, you know, uh, there's a threshold. I, you know, even though the codes, um, meant to further restrict the numbers and, and go through a lot of regulations and hoops, if you want to call them that. Um, we're still being impacted by the, the influx of folks buying into the neighborhood and changing the residential fabric. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pintar, can I just ask you a quick, when you talk about changing the fabric?
Yeah.
What are you witnessing in your neighborhood?
Well.
I mean, what, tell me, tell me some of the negatives that you've seen in your neighborhood as a result of what's going on.
We certainly want to promote owner occupied.
I, I don't want to hear about that. I want to hear the negatives. I mean, the fact that somebody lives there that doesn't own it may be a negative to you, but how is it a negative to your impact or your quality of life?
Well.
If they're nice people, they're, they're coming in, they're taking care of their property, they've got nice kids, they're staying there and they're leaving. How are they negatively impacting you? That's, that's what I want to hear.
Traffic.
So because they come and go more than a person who lives there?
Correct. More traffic, more, more traffic that doesn't know the neighborhood and doesn't know their, the neighborhood characteristic, the, you know, characteristics of these neighborhoods are small drop, short, small width driveways. And, and, um, you, you know, they weren't built for S. U. Vs, vans and that type of thing. So.
And so you're saying that somebody could buy the house and drive a Suburban. That's okay, but if they rent the house and drive a Suburban, that's not okay?
Correct.
It is. Uh, that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Okay.
So I have to get your approval on what I drive?
No, sir. All I'm saying is that if you drive to your house in your S. U. V. Every day, you know how to maneuver in that space. Someone from New York City coming into my neighborhood or from L. A. Or wherever it would be every week doesn't necessarily know the attributes of how difficult it is to maneuver on a driveway that's meant for a nineteen twenties cars.
I'd say somebody who drives his S. U. V. In New York City knows exactly what they're doing with a big vehicle. All right, not, not trying to be argumentative. I just, I really want to see how it's negatively impacting you. And unfortunately, you're not able to explain that to me. But thank you. Other questions? Any comments? Okay, Erin Strika.
Hi, this is Erin Strika with Rosedale Development Association at fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. Um, Rosel, uh, R. D. A. Has not taken an official position on this, um, project in particular, but I do have a question for Mr. Pierce, if I may. Uh, Mr. Pierce was here last month with three other short term rentals in the Rosedale neighborhood and back again this month with a fourth. Um, and, um, it, in answer to the, the question about neighborhood fabric, um, I, one thing that I will add to that is the fabric of the neighborhood is made of relationships. And when there are many, 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 many S. T. Rs, the relationships in the neighborhood are just diluted, they're broken down over time, which is why I would like to know how many more short term rentals in Rosedale Mr. Pierce is planning from here. And I apologize, I couldn't make his neighborhood meeting to ask him person. Uh, but I wondered if I could ask that question tonight. Thank you.
See if I can get you an answer. Is that the only question you have, Erin?
Yes, that was it. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Pierce, or do you have any other, um, S. T. Rs. That you're planning on bringing on in the Rosedale area that you're aware of right now?
Um, no, we're not. Just the four that we've brought to the table.
All right, and this is your fourth one?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. All right, and how far away are they all located from one another?
Um, well, the city ordinance requires only one per block, so.
So you're, you're within those requirements, but all right, never mind. Thank you.
Yeah.
Marissa Butler?
Hi, yes, um, I just wanted to second, uh, what a couple of the other speakers had said. I live in Spring Valley. I am at forty-four sixty-two Cambridge Street. Um, and I came to this commission five years ago in opposition to, uh, an S. T. R. That was coming down the block from me and I just wanted to say a couple of things that weren't mentioned, um, that one, as I understand it, the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the, um, ones that have already been approved are grandfathered in, so approving more, even though there technically supposed to be one per block, might actually lead to more per block because of the grandfathered in ones.
That's incorrect.
Is that incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Um, the other thing that it does affect, similar to the gentleman in Hanover Heights, um, it deludes our voting base, it deludes, um, community. It deludes affordability, and I do think that those are affect, affect our quality of life. And from, to what he had said about traffic, um, there are issues with people parking on the wrong side of the street. Um, I think those are smaller in comparison to the greater sort of, you know, like not having actual neighbors, um, not having eyes and ears on the street, not having somebody you know you can go if there's a problem. Um, so that would be what I would add to the daily quality of life. Um, thank you for listening. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you for that perspective. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning, and this is a special use permit for a short term rental that is not owner occupied. Oh, excuse me, this is in the Rosedale area. Um, before this meeting, uh, the staff have received no letters of support nor opposition. There are no notices to violation of the property. Staff recommends approval of conditions for one year, including the maximum of six people and three cars off-site, excuse me, off-street. Uh, we are asking for some additional sidewalk repairs, uh, as well as some repairs to the house that are altered in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Uh, questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Isles?
Uh, this is Commissioner Isles. Uh, Director Hand, do you know if they're currently operating without a permit?
Uh, one second.
Can I speak to that?
Do you have a quick answer, Mr. Pierce?
Um, yes, the property is currently being rented for thirty plus days, and so we're running as it, as a medium term rental right now. And we'll, once the license passes, we'll move it towards a short term rental. That won't be until late October when the current medium term rental expires.
All right. Do you have another question for Commissioner, uh, for?
I guess this would be for the applicant also. You understand that you need to, um, uh, meet all the conditions. It looks like there's quite a few repairs that need to be done.
Yes, we've, uh, worked with staff to understand those requirements and, um, have accomplished some of them, but not all of them, but will be completing the remainder of them.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else you want to add, Director Hand?
Yeah, one small correction. There's a typo, um, condition number twenty-one should say one year, not two.
Good questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve special use permit two zero two three dash zero four seven, subject to applications and comments.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
No.
Moller?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Isles?
No.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S. P. Forty-seven for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes six in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on September twenty-eighth, seven P. M. Before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit S. P. Two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five seven. Betsy Maxfield, special use permit to operate a short term rental at forty-four thirty-six Cambridge Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The application other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Mr. Chairman, before you call on the applicant, I do have a letter in support that was received, um, Friday afternoon after the packets were sent out, if you would like for me to read it into the record.
Uh, go ahead.
Please note my affirmative support to grant this property forty-four thirty-six Cambridge Street, owned by Betsy and Ryan Maxfield, a special use permit to operate a non-owner occupied S. T. R. We have observed the diligence and care with which Mr. And Mrs. Maxfield have operated this address as guest quarters for out of area family as well as traditional rental property to K. U. Students over the past several years. The house has been well managed as well as the grounds. We are not aware of any parking or policing problems under the ownership of the Maxfields. It is our conviction that following the new S. T. R. Ordinance requirements, in addition to their excellent record as traditional landlords, bodes well to let this S. U. P. Be granted as soon as possible. We look forward to seeing a properly managed S. T. R. In our Spring Valley neighborhood as an example of good neighbor practices. Thank you for the diligence and attention U. G. Staff and Commissioners have given this challenging ordinance. We look forward to more cohesive operations of all S. T. Rs. In K. C. K. Respectfully, Valerie Wells Fenton, forty-four thirty State Line Road.
Thank you, Janet. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Please give us your name and address and tell us about your project.
Um, my name is Betsy Maxfield and my husband, I believe, might be on the Zoom call with our kids at home.
Yes.
Um, and we reside at one zero zero one West Seventieth Street in Kansas City, Missouri.
Okay, and what are you wanting to do with your property? How long have you owned it?
Uh, we have owned it for almost, we bought it in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and then we started operating it last year as a S. T. R. Um, and so we're looking to permit it properly. Once we found out we were supposed to do that. This is our only one, um, and it's basically our little family business. We live um, about two miles away. We can get there in eight to ten minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for this applicant? Commissioner Isles?
Uh, Commissioner Isles, uh, Ms. Maxfield, uh, do you, so you didn't know you needed a permit?
No, ma'am. I don't own any other properties. I, it was my first adventure and I'm trying to learn and properly follow the rules as I go along.
Do you allow pets?
We do.
Do you have a fenced yard?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you have a business license?
We do have an LLC, correct.
No, a business license through, um, the U. G. You have to have a business license to run a business in Kansas City, Kansas?
Then we will apply for one immediately.
Good, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the public want to speak to this case? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Jacob Hotson. I am the president of the Spring Valley Neighborhood Association. I reside at four, 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 eight Francis Street. And the U. G.'s code of ordinances, section twenty-seven dash one nine nine, neighborhood meetings, neighborhood meeting identification, generally. Neighborhood shall, the neighborhood shall include all parcels located within two hundred feet of the boundary of the parcel of the proposed development and any homeowner association, neighborhood association, or merchants association. I would like to inform, uh, the commission that I did not receive a notification of the neighborhood meeting, nor did anybody else on the executive committee.
Okay.
That is all.
All right, thank you.
Commissioners, um, again, Gil Pintar, forty-one seventy-eight Cambridge, Hanover Heights. Um, I'm going to make a second stab at what I was trying to pro, um, proclaim in that these neighborhoods, uh, including, uh, my original garage, uh, many of the garages can't even hold a, a standard pickup truck. Uh, many, uh, have been altered. However, uh, homeowners or renters know the constraints of their property. S. T. R. Folks who come and go don't necessarily know the constraints. Therefore, if you rented a van at the airport with your four people, uh, with their baggage and so forth, you rent a van or whatever it is, those larger vehicles can impact neighborhoods such as ours. That's the only point that I was trying to make with regards to how the neighborhoods are so tightly designed. You, you can't even back out of certain driveways without backing into cars that are parked on the street. These are old designed neighborhoods. It's not like out west where you've got plenty of right of way and so forth. There, there are constraints and they do affect the neighbors. Thank you so much.
No, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. Uh, I'm sorry, we have a question for you, Mr. Pintar?
Uh, Commissioner Isles, um, Mr. Pintar is, uh, Cambridge at, in, in the forty-four hundred block. Is there parking on both sides of the street there?
Uh, on the forty-four hundred block, I would have to say.
Just one side? Okay.
Okay.
But I'm, I used to live on Cambridge a little further north and the streets are not very wide.
To, to answer your question a little further, there, you know, certain streets have parking on both sides just because they, they are wider and some have, um, uh, parking on one side. So it kind of, it's hit and miss.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's tighter when they're on both sides. I'm going to go to Erin Strika.
Thank you. Erin Strika with Rosedale Development Association at fourteen oh three Southwest Boulevard. Um, I've been really interested watching the new ordinance kind of take, uh, be put into action. Um, last month was, was very interesting and this month was too. Um, one of the great things about the ordinance is it allows the planning commission to take into account neighborhood character and neighbors input in a way that they couldn't under the previous ordinance. Um, this particular project is, is on an unusual block because as far as I can tell, just from looking at the Airbnb website, there are already more than just this one operating S. T. Rs. Um, and so Rosedale has a master plan implementation committee. We talked quite a bit about this and about how, um, that's not the purpose of the ordinance. The purpose was to set some density limits. Um, and, and this is something that we'll discuss with staff too, but, um, to my knowledge, there's one with an expired permit that appears to still be operating. There are a lot of out of state cars there and it appears to me to still be listed on Airbnb. There's another that's operating illegally that sounds like it has been told it has to stop, but hasn't stopped yet. Um, and I believe that there's also another house being rehabbed for this purpose. So there, there are four properties competing for the one non-owner occupied S. T. R. Spot on this block. So a couple of things that I'd like to ask for, um, first is just some, some assertive enforcement in this area. And I know that staff are working on that very hard. Um, the second thing I'd like to ask for is a little bit of clarification for neighbors. For what you would like us to do when S T Rs are operating without permits or when there are problems. Um, currently we're just kind of emailing planning staff, but we're, I'm wondering if there's a. Hotline that we could call, you know, is there a, a system that we can share with the neighborhood about how to work problems? Um, the third thing is I, uh, I, I, I think, um. Ms. Wells Fenton, who is a nearby neighbor to this property and who is on our, uh, master plan implementation committee. Was able to attend the neighborhood meeting and, and had a good impression of these owners. Um, and I think if there are four competing properties for the one slot on this block. My sense is that this is a responsible owner and it makes sense to grant this S U P to them. Um, that said, I, I think this is a really good test case for us to figure out how enforcement is gonna work under this new. Ordinance, um, and as part of that, of course, we have to involve the neighborhood group. So, um, while I, I support this particular proposal for those reasons, I, I do think it would make sense and be respectful of the neighborhood. To hold it over and make sure to engage neighborhood leadership. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Kelly White, four-four one zero Francis Street. Um, I think this is a perfect example of, um, the impact I was speaking of in the previous. Application is that, um, while she's done a good job apparently of maintaining the home. That, that should be the minimum expectation. She's decided to go ahead and start a business and then ask questions later. And that's exactly the type of thing that we want to keep, um, keep from happening. So, um. I, I agree with everything that Erin said with regard to her particular application, but I would also like to speak about the, the fabric of the neighborhood that, um. You asked Gil about and what we, I can speak to is there are approximately three hundred homes in Spring Valley. And I know a good portion of the people that live in these homes because I've lived here for thirteen years and I walk my dogs twice a day all throughout our neighborhood. So when you have people coming in and out that are not from our area, I'm paying attention to people that live in the area. I'm watching older people. I'm watching younger people move in to make sure they're welcomed. And when you have things like this happening in the neighborhood, that does impact the fabric of the neighborhood. Um, the social connections are important and I think it's important that we be thinking particularly in our area because it is a popular area due to Westport, Plaza, downtown, everywhere. It's more important that we have affordable home, affordable housing for people. And it also impacts the fabric, I'm going back for just a second, is that we are pricing people out. It used to be a socioeconomic, um, neighborhood when I moved there. It is not like that anymore. And this is part of the reason. So I, I'm obviously opposed to this project as well.
Thank you very much. Marissa Butler.
Hello, thank you. Um, I'm back. I just wanted to clarify, um, I'm at forty-four sixty-two Cambridge Street, about six houses up from this one. Um, it is right next door to what was an Airbnb and that what we think is still operating as an Airbnb. And I just wanted to check on that before I gave my approval. Um, and I am with Valerie and Erin on this that. If this is the one per block, this does seem to be fairly well maintained, um, that I would be in favor of it, but as long as the other ones are being enforced. Um, and I also wanted to clarify a question that had come up earlier. Cambridge is a very small street. It is, um, two-way, but parking is only on one side. And if you have an Amazon truck or anything, it blocks the entire street and takes up. Um, we, we've had, it, it's a constant problem. So just, just to go back to what the gentleman from Hanover Heights said. So those are my, um, and I second everything that Kelly White just said as well, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. We'll get clarification on the one per block. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close, close the portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and can you just clarify, I'm assuming we're here because this is the only one on the block, correct? Or we wouldn't be having this hearing.
Apparently we're tracking one other unpermitted short-term rental on the block that would need to be closed down if this were to be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so it is unpermitted. Okay. Thank you. All right, and your comments?
Uh, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning, number nine. Again, this is a special use permit for short-term rental, non-owner occupied. Um, again, I noted that there's one unpermitted short-term rental also on the block that we will be tracking through this approval process. This is again in the Rosedale area plan. Um, before this evening, we had received, and it was read in by Ms. Parker, one letter of support. Uh, before this meeting, we had received no letters in opposition before the comments, and there are no notices of violation on the property. Staff recommends approval for one year. A maximum of six people and two cars off, uh, onsite, off-street. One of the conditions of approval or standard condition of approval for all of us to get a business.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve, uh, special use permit two zero two-three dash zero five seven, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you, motion for approval made by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong. Oh, I'm sorry, Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Isles.
No.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit. For one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, September twenty-eighth, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you all.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine Jorge Ramirez. Special use permit for a drinking establishment with live entertainment at forty-nine sixty State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mister Ramirez, are you online? Okay, go ahead and I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Unmute yourself.
Yes, my name is, my name is Jorge Ramirez and, and I am the owner of the property on forty-nine sixty State Avenue.
And what are you wanting to do there, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, good night, everybody. Uh, I'm trying to get a, a live entertainment license in a restaurant that me and my family. Uh, had been working for the past four years, were ready to open. And we would like to get a live entertainment license, or if it's, if it's possible, please.
Okay, have you, you said you've owned this business before?
Yes, sir. I own the business and me and my family, we have been working for the past four years. We renewed the complete building like a hundred percent and we're ready to open.
Okay, now you wanna, now you wanna allow some live entertainment?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, sir. If, if it's possible, please.
Okay, what kind of entertainment are you wanting to, to add?
So. Uh, we would like maybe like on Fridays or Saturdays, like most on Saturdays, the weekend. Uh, to be able to do some karaoke, karaoke with my customers and also. Uh, once in a while be able to bring a, a singer, you know, like to, to have a little bit of entertainment and, and I. And I am willing to, to hire a K C P D to be there. Uh, and protect my customers and my neighbors and, and to, to, to have a safe, safety environment.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition? Raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand.
Name is Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning. This is a special use permit for a live entertainment at a restaurant. This is in the comprehensive plant area in midtown, just off State Avenue. Staff have received, uh, no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are some older notices of violation from the previous owner that have all been, uh, closed and rectified, rectified and closed, excuse me. Staff recommends approval for two years with conditions, one of which is a creating a direct pedestrian link, uh, from the sidewalk on State Avenue to the front door of the property. I would also note that, um, there have been previous special use permits for entertainment in previous versions of this restaurant. Um, so it's not an uncommon use, uh, for this site.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve special use case twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones, subject to staff stipulations. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Isles.
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P fifty-nine for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, September twenty-eighth, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero. Gunner Hand, Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas. Special use permit for an event space at Legends Field at eighteen hundred Village West Parkway. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mister Hand.
Thank you, Commissioners, Gunner Hand, uh. Seven oh one North Seventh Street, Suite four-two-three. Um, as is the case, occasionally we find entitlements for U G on property that don't have the enough or the correct entitlements. Uh, and so as we have been working with, uh, the folks out at the Monarchs Ball Stadium, we've noticed that. Uh, it never received a special use permit to do more than just be a ball field. Uh, it has been more than a ball field even back in the T-bones days. Uh, so it's not unique necessarily to this new, um. Team owner, I should say. Uh, it is still owned by the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, and as such, uh, we are requesting a special use permit. Um, in coordination with, uh, the Monarchs Baseball Club, um, to allow for, uh, events as they have done in the past and hope to continue to do. So this is a bit retroactive. Uh, why it was overlooked, we couldn't find out or address with any institutional knowledge. And so, uh, we are requesting a special use permit to use the Legends Field as an event space indefinitely.
And thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yeah, I, I would say, how do you give us a recommendation on something like this?
Carefully.
Carefully worded. All right, well, you have to do it before Mister Conley jumps off in five minutes, in case he has any questions for you.
Roger that.
I, I want to give him the opportunity to cross-examine. Anyone in the audience? Want to, uh, speak to this case in favor of, or, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, legal counsel?
I just did, did have a couple of quick questions about, um, what parts of the park or what, what areas.
Blanket.
Okay. So if you've got lots of different spaces that they can rent out and use for their own point.
Parking lots, the entire venue, correct?
Yep, it would still be subject to certain types of special event permits depending on what they were proposing. Um, but generally everything kind of inside the gate is kind of free game. Everything outside the gate will probably require additional, um, oversight from the Unified Government.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Raise your hand. Seeing none, we've essentially heard from the applicant. And do you want to make an official comment from a staff perspective?
Um, staff reviewed this case, uh, outside of me and they recommend approval.
So he says, uh, any questions for staff in his hearsay opinion?
Nice.
Mister Ernst.
I just wanted to thank, uh. Gunner for being so understanding that mistakes were made and they have come to correct them. We have that every once in a while and we try to be understanding.
Very good.
I just made a quick note to that. We do have to come back and also do a master plan amendment for this property as well, um. Which is a condition of approval of this special use permit. I would also note we're working, and I think I'd mentioned this previously, but we're also working on a special use permit for Memorial Hall, if you can believe it, it has never had a special.
Well, we can't blame that one on you now, can we?
No, that one goes back much deeper than I think any of us here today.
All right. So that may be Mister Ernst.
But in the spirit, I mean, on that one, well, okay.
Okay.
Wow.
Questions for Director Hand? If not, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Ernst.
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition S P twenty twenty-three days zero six zero, subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you for your good humor and your motion. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Neither does.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Conley.
I think we lost him.
Okay, Isles.
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P sixty, subject to the conditions in the staff report. Passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, October twenty-eighth, sorry, September twenty-eighth, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Our next special use permit is S P twenty twenty-three dash zero six one, Tatum Philip. Special use permit to operate a short-term rental at eight zero nine Central Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The application of other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Thank you.
Tatum, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address.
Hi, um, I am Tatum Philip and I own eight oh nine Central Avenue in Kansas City, Kansas. Sorry, I'm, uh, I've been playing a baseball game, so I'm a little winded.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on. Sorry, I've been on here since six, but, but, um, yeah, sorry, I planned to, um. So I've been operating as a short-term rental. I did not know I needed a permit. Um, this is my first property. And I just, I really had no idea. So once the Kansas City, uh, Missouri ordinance came out, I thought. You know, maybe I should look into Kansas City, Kansas, and I saw online, I needed one. So as soon as I saw that, I called. And applied for it and have been doing everything they've asked me to do. Um, and yeah, I would just love to continue operating.
Okay, uh, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Isles?
According to the report we're looking at here, it said that you continued to operate despite being told to cease operations until and if your special use permit was approved. Did you understand that direction?
I took my listings off, but I still had bookings that were already booked, so I didn't know what to do with that. I know Airbnb like charges you a huge fine for that. So I didn't cancel bookings that hadn't been in place for months. No, but I did take them off. I wasn't aware that I had to cancel everything.
So you can't, you canceled new bookings, correct?
Yeah, I did not accept any new bookings, no. I had to get on Airbnb twice to take it off. I had to call them twice because I had it, I, I promise I took it off and somehow I got a booking. So I called them and I was like, hey, I cannot have this online. So I just got a notification, it's going back on tomorrow because I just did like, I just kept doing it in months, segments. But I plan to take that off until I get approval. It's not on VRBO. That one came off as soon as I did it. I don't know why Airbnb didn't come off the first time. But as soon as I found out I had a booking since I took it off, I like took it off again and I haven't had any bookings since.
And you understand that your guests cannot park on the street?
I am aware of that now. I did not know that beforehand, but I do have a pretty large driveway and most people are from out of town, so they carpool with like two cars, sometimes just one, and my driveway fits like four to six.
Okay, I couldn't understand that last part, but. And then do you have a business license to operate a business in the unified government from the unified government?
I was not aware I needed that, but I have been on here since six and I've heard you saying that to people. So that is in my notes to get done as soon as possible. But I'm, yeah, I really had, I, just a young girl buying a house, big dreams, little brain. I, yeah, I didn't know that it entailed this much. I probably wouldn't have done it if I did, but I've already been doing it, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Raise your hand. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning, it's a special use permit for a short-term rental owner occupied. It has been in operation for the last two years. We did notify the applicant that they needed to shut down the sites until they receive approval. That's kind of our standard language as we've been doing the zoning blitz and as we've been bringing all these cases in for the cold. Again, I think there's a, I don't know how much of I could do the numbers, but I think there's been a majority of these that have been coming in from the cold sometimes up to two years.
No, I actually bought the house of June 2022.
Okay.
Okay, let it, let us keep going, Tatum.
So this is in the, again, central area plan. We've received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation. I will pause on this picture real quick. You can see they have a rear yard issue as it's all been paved. That's one of the conditions of approval to address that for the next, for the next approval cycle if it moves forward tonight at Board of Commissioners. Staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, maximum of six people, two cars off-street. Again, we have to address the rear yard and open space requirement as per code. We've seen this in previous cases on these smaller lots doing parking strips and keeping it, doing it in permeable pavement. It's relatively fresh concrete, so I think that's going to be something we have to work through. Additionally, staff would like to add a condition by motion tonight that if the third bedroom in the basement is going to be used as a bedroom, that a building permit needs to be applied for and closed out to add an egress window. And so we're not 100% sure if Ms. Phillips wants to use the third bedroom, which is why we're at six instead of seven people for our maximum people allowed. But if a, if that third bedroom is to be used, it needs to get an egress window and it does not currently as we understood it, so. That's for staff's comments.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to approve special use permit 2023-061 with the addition of the added condition of the possible use of the third bedroom.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward with the stipulation added by, excuse me, Director Hand. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead, discussion, Commissioner Isles.
This is Commissioner Isles. Director Hand, it looks like from her drawing that all three bedrooms are on the first floor. It's on page 17.
Correct.
I apologize, it might be consideration of a fourth bedroom in the basement then, so we can amend that to say fourth bedroom.
All right, is that okay with the makers of the motion and the second?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So motion on the floor for approval. If there is a fourth bedroom in the basement, it would be subject to an egress. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones? Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Isles?
No.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP 61 for one year, subject to the revised conditions, passes six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, October, excuse me, September 28th, 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that completes the special use permits. Our next application is plat 2023-024, Larry Hahn, preliminary and final plat to split one residential lot into two lots called Wooded Acres at 2620 South 69th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 11, 2023, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notices to property owners and the testimony at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting earlier this evening. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No. Mr. Hahn, go ahead, you're up. Larry Hahn? Kenny, are you gonna take this one? Kenny? I need you to unmute yourself, please. Kenny, we did this before. Kenny or Larry? Kenny? Go ahead and try to unmute yourself again. Kenny or Larry? Kenny? What would you like to do, Gunner? He's unmuted, but can't hear him.
I'd recommend we move forward and we can hear this case.
All right, go ahead.
This case is being heard in conjunction with Boza 2023-035, which was approved earlier this evening by the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're talking about taking one parcel and creating two. This is in the comprehensive plan area in the Turner Neighborhood. Staff received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some older notices of violation related to maintenance of the property that have all been rectified and closed. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Again, this is the plat that creates a legal-sized parcel and created the, or exacerbated the three-to-one depth to width ratio that we mentioned that we discussed a little bit earlier this evening.
All right, questions for Director Hand on the presentation of the case? Seeing none, anyone in the audience online want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we'll now go back to Director Hand and get his recommendation.
Staff recommends approval with conditions.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff and a motion?
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Make, make a motion to approve plat 2023-024, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Isles?
Isles. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion. Sorry, I don't know what's going on, but it passes seven in favor and none opposed, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
All right, thank you. This will be heard one, this will not be heard, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to our plan reviews. PR 2023-019, Andrea Rand with ISG, preliminary and final plan review for a self-storage facility at 5200 State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 11, 2023, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No. Okay, Ms. Rand, you have two open Zoom links. I need you to close out one because you're causing my echo.
Mr. Chairman, I would remind the commission that this application was heard last month and was held over for 30 days.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Rand, you're queued up and ready to go now.
Okay, I'm speaking from one. Can you hear me?
Yes, we've got you. We can hear you fine now.
Okay, am I able to share my screen?
Janet, do you have she, she, screen sharing capability?
Yeah, just give me one second. I have to promote her to a panelist first and then give her the capability.
Okay, I'm speaking from one device and I want to share a screen from the other. Is that possible?
Okay, as long as we keep one of them muted, that other one muted, I think we're good.
I'm gonna mute my phone and go back over to my computer, okay?
Okay, Mr. Mr. Chairman, it's not allowing me to, to promote her. Oh, well, hang on. I got.
All right, it said it let me. Are you able to share now, Ms. Rand?
Yes, and can you hear me?
Yes. There you go. Is that you, Gunner, or is that her?
That's me if she needs to get to the side plan.
Okay, if you're, if you're unable to share, Ms. Rand, Director Hand has your presentation.
All right, I am.
It says you declined to be promoted to a panelist.
Oh, there she is.
She's good.
All right, you're good.
All right, so you can hear me and you can see this. We're all good to go?
We're good to go now.
Okay, thank you.
But your time is, your time is up, so thank you for being with us.
All right.
I'm kidding, go ahead.
It's been a long, long night. Yes, I understand. All right, well, good evening, I should say, to Planning Commission. My name is Andrea Rand. Do I need to state my address?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay, 7900 International Drive, Suite 550, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55425. And I wanted to say thanks for your time again to hear this case. I am with ISG and we are the design firm that is representing U-Haul. Move screens. Okay, the request before you tonight is for approval of a preliminary development plan and a final development plan. There are design deviations requested and conditions that are outlined in the staff report. This is for a new U-Box storage building and site improvements to an existing U-Haul site at 5200 State Avenue. We started this process in the spring of 2022. We had two pre-application meetings with the staff to review the site layout and design guidelines. With the feedback we received, we then proceeded to the final design. During this time, we've reached out to staff to further clarify design requirements in the code intent. Specifically, we reached out to staff about the location of a loading dock being in front of the building if we added an architectural compatible screen wall to meet the intent of the code. Staff indicated that this screen wall would suffice to meet the code intent and that we could proceed. We submitted our application in May and then the application was presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Planning Commission on August 14th. Staff report recommended approval. However, at that meeting, staff suggested to the Planning Commission that two conditions would be added. One would be for a pedestrian connection to the new building and the other was to rotate the building so that the loading dock would not be in front. Given this was new information, Planning Commission recommended that this would be continued so that the applicant could come back in 30 days. Our team met with staff to review these last-minute and new conditions. We agreed that pedestrian connection does not make sense at this time to the new, to the new building, since there would be no public access to the building. Instead, we agreed with staff to add a condition to have a sign on the building that says no public access and that if the building were to change use, then a pedestrian connection would be required at that time. For the site layout, we are proceeding with the site layout as proposed because we believe it still meets the intent of the code and we were never told otherwise by staff through the entire review process that it needed to be changed. The current site is on the screen before you. It's a seven-and-a-half acre site and U-Haul has been in business there since 1984. As a result, the site does not conform to many of the zoning code and design guidelines effective today. The current site consists of a self-storage building, mini-storage building, and provides trailer truck rentals. The proposal is for a new U-Box storage unit and site improvements, which will bring the site into much greater conformance that exists today. The U-Box building will have a footprint of just less than 14,000 square feet and there will be no public access. The site improvements will include adding landscaping, pedestrian connections, and a trash enclosure screen. On the screen before you, this slide highlights the development proposal items. For reference, the existing building is the larger grayish-blue shaded image. The U-Box building is the lighter brighter blue square to the east. The U-Box building will serve as a storage building for U-Boxes. These are moving boxes that are packed by customers off-site and then picked up by a U-Haul truck driver employee and driven by this U-Haul employee and truck and unloaded in this U-Haul U-Box storage building. So this building is only accessed by employees when it's needed to load or unload a storage box. And just to emphasize, there's no customer access to this new building. All the green areas indicate where new landscaping would be planted for site improvements. There will be an additional 35 trees and 210 shrubs planted on-site and eight new internal parking lot landscape islands. and eight new internal parking lot landscape islands. We're also adding two new pedestrian crosswalks. One will be from the sidewalk along the public street and the other will be to the truck rental canopy internal to the parking lot. Both crosswalks would be striped and included in ADA ramp into the plaza in front of the customer service self-storage building. We also have proposed additional pedestrian enhancement features to the entrance area of the existing customer service building. We'll be adding a bench and raised planters to make that a more pleasant area for um employees and customers. There will be new access to the site shown in the gray highlighted area to the east on the site. The trucks will primarily use this access they need um unless they need to exit east. The loading dock is located on the front side of the building to accommodate truck movement and to reduce the truck conflicts with the customer traffic and existing site features. Early in the design process, we did explore rotating the building, but we could not do so to accommodate the truck movements without creating too many disturbances to the existing onsite programming and conflicts with the customer parking. As a result, we had asked staff if adding this architectural compatible screen wall as shown with this small blue sliver between the building and the street. Um, staff indicated that this would be the intent of the code. They suggested that um we could proceed. By having this loading dock up front, we not only reduce the onsite conflicts of the trucks and customers, we also reduce any noise on the rear side of the building that is closer to the adjacent residential properties. The design deviations we are requesting are related to pedestrian access, building design, and parking lot landscaping. As demonstrated, we're bringing the site into much greater conformance than exists today, but we are working with old existing site limitations. It is important to note that the new U-Box building is set back sixty-nine feet from both the front and the rear property lines and that the rear building wall will not be visible as a gray changes forty feet from the back of the building to the back of the property line because the hill essentially hides the building from view. The front loading dock is also greatly set back from the street and the screen wall, along with the street trees and shrubs, will greatly hide the visibility of this loading dock to the street frontage. This last slide will show the existing conditions and then the proposed conditions. I'm actually gonna change screens here. And I have a slider. And it shows the existing conditions and we have overlaid the proposed site. So you can see how the site improvements will look when the site is finished. You can see all the green landscaping added along the street frontage along with the building and how the design would look and how it would greatly improve the site appearance and area. So we ask for planning commission approval and thank you for your time and we are also available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm not saying any. We'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and we will have some discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning or Design. Again, this case was heard in conjunction with Boza twenty twenty-three zero two-three, a parking variance that was approved last month. It was also held over for last month. To go through some of the requested deviations with staff, again, this is the U-Haul expansion in the Conference of Plan area in the Midtown neighborhood. Staff received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some old notices of violation that all have been cleared and rectified. Uh, staff recommends approval with conditions. Again, the there are deviations still in front of you um that are that are written into the condition of approval, so you can accept it as is. We were able to clear the pet um access deviation from that list, but the building orientation is still there.
So what you're feeling on the building orientation? The building orientation now faces the west, correct?
It faces the the well, the the loading dock faces the south, which is towards the street.
Correct. The front of the building faces west.
I mean, the, correct. There kind of is no front of the building.
Well, that U-Haul logo to me is the front of the building and that's facing west.
There would be one on both sides.
Sorry, access. Uh, again, it's basically a storage facility, so the loading docks and all the ingress egress still happens on the State Avenue side, but there's no public entry. Again, this was why staff raised the issue last month. We worked through it with them. The the short of it is, I don't think staff will ever um support a deviation for building orientation. That doesn't mean that this body hasn't approved it in the past. A staff member who no longer works at the UG gave this proper project direction and I didn't catch it until late enough, so we are where we are. If we had said the right thing initially a year ago, we probably would have gotten it moved uh in the right direction, but the applicant uh worked with us to a degree. Um, again, we were able to resolve one of the two main issues that staff had and um uh they did not see a design solution. A quick, not costly, design solution, I think would be their perspective.
All right, everybody online heard that? Questions? Legal counsel Jeff Conway.
Uh, so the company has proposed that screen, that wall on the loading dock side. Does staff agree with that?
Uh, again, if we had given the right input early on, it would not have looked like this.
If it has to happen this way, you're willing to take that as a consolation prize?
Honestly, in my opinion, this is a lesson learned in a process improvement. I hope I never miss uh miss that at the DRC again.
Okay. Questions? I will stand for a motion when you are ready. Mr. Jones.
Motion to approve planner review case number two zero two-three dash zero one-nine subject to staff stipulations and comment.
And what does that mean? Is that with the orientation, the way that it's been presented this evening?
Yes.
All right.
I understand Gunner was good with that.
All right, thank you. Is there a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're moving on. Okay, then move to seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of PR nineteen, subject to the revised conditions passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. I think we're gonna have a nice looking project regardless of the outcome. I don't think that came out right, but I think we're gonna have a nice looking project. And improvement to the site. Let's just leave it at that. It's late.
Definitely an improvement to the site.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item does move on to the Board of Commissioners meeting.
I'm sorry?
That item moves on to the Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will be on September twenty-eighth at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Rand.
Thank you, and I just realized my screen was not turned on this whole time, so.
That's all right, you're good. That's all right, thank you.
That's all right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Our next application is plan review application PR twenty twenty-three dash zero two-one. Nicole Curry with BRR Architecture. Final plan review to approve building elevation revisions from to the previously approved Hudson Apartments at thirty-six-hundred Rainbow Boulevard. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September eleven, twenty twenty-three, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Do we have someone representing the developer here tonight? Nicole Curry or her representative? Ms. Curry?
I don't know if Ms. Brailsford or Mr. Fox.
Mr. Brails or Mr. Fox or Ms. Brailsford or either one of you here representing uh Ms. Curry and BRR Architecture? Okay, Ms. Brailsford? Go ahead and mute yourself, please, Tanya. Ms. Brailsford, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, are you representing Nicole Curry or BRR Architecture?
No, I'm not.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you just a moment. Thank you. I don't believe we have anybody.
Uh, staff would recommend we proceed with denial.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, again, this was held over from last month at the applicant's request. Uh, they did receive notice that they should be here this evening. I'm not hundred percent sure why they aren't, although it is relatively late. Not sure if anybody else potentially has something to say, but we'll get to that. So uh, this is a um, this project already has a final development plan. In fact, it's under construction right now. Uh, it's got approved building permits. What they are proposing to do is change the rear. Again, this is the back of the property, if you're familiar, that faces um essentially a cliff uh or a bluff. Uh, it already received a deviation to have more than the allowed metal paneling per facade. They are asking for cost-saving purposes to have the rear of the property be clad in Ephys. Um, if so the current design guidelines say that uh multifamily design guidelines say Ephys is a prohibited material. If we use the word prohibited in the zoning code, you couldn't even apply for a variance. Uh, but because these are still design guidelines, they are still up to the City Planning Commission to make this decision. But as it is identified specifically as a prohibited material for multifamily design guidelines, staff would recommend denial. Um, very quickly, this is in the Rosedale area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition, no notices of violation. Uh, we do have approvals uh with conditions if need be. But staff recommends denial.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand. Seeing none, are there any questions for Director Hand? I guess my only comment would be, I hate these things that we approve and then they build them and then they come in and they want changes because they think we've got it built and they think we're just gonna make the changes. So I would not, if I had a vote, would not be in support. Any comments, questions? If not, I will seek a motion. Mr. Ernst?
I move the Kansas City City Planning Commission, deny petition PR two oh two-three days zero two-one. That is not in compliance with the city ordinances.
Thank you. Motion for denial made by Commissioner Ernst uh for the reasons stated by the maker. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Beth. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this final plan review for the reasons stated passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Will this be heard again, Janet?
No, sir, it will not. It's final plan review.
All right, so we have two left.
Yes, sir, we do. Our next application is determination of conformance with downtown area plan of the downtown campus redevelopment project plan for mixed-use commercial slash residential building and redevelopment of Rudin Center at five hundred Minnesota Avenue.
Do we have someone online that's presenting this case?
Mr. Chair, staff will present this one. Anna Kruzelik is uh UG Special Counsel, outside counsel.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, so this is related to um state law and TIF districts. Uh, this is specifically the redevelopment center, which has received um technically, it's received all of its land entitlements previously. However, this TIF changes the district because if you remember from that case, the new members won't remember this perhaps, but it used to include um some ball fields at the current proposed site of the downtown KCK campus, so about a block away on State Avenue at Nebraska. This is on Fifth. So that is now a part of the KCK project. It's no longer a part, so the TIF district does not need to extend over there. So they're changing the TIF district, which will be heard at the Board of Commissioners later this month uh and week. Uh, so we have to come back to the Planning Commission and the ask here is, does the project, which is a multifamily uh mixed-use building, uh, does it meet the downtown master plan? Staff believes it does still, even with the change in the TIF district. I will make a note, though, that with the change from the TIF district, it does change the property and we have notified the applicant of the project that it cannot move forward without a final development plan. So if we had issues with the design of the project, that's not what this case is about. That's for another day. This is specifically just asking as per state statute, does the proposed project meet the downtown area plan? Staff believes it does.
And legal counsel incurs.
Yeah, I do.
So what do you need from us? Is it just a conformance?
I need approval, yeah.
Approval.
Permission of approval, that that conformance has been found, yes.
All right. Questions for staff? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Excuse me, Commissioner Jones, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
I apologize.
Okay, any questions for Director Hand on this matter? If not, I will need a motion to confirm conformance.
Yes.
You have, do you have a motion? It's right there. It's in your packet. Okay, Commissioner, I got Commissioner Ernst. I'm sorry, Commissioner Ernst, go ahead. I'll give you the second, though.
I'm, I move the Kansas City Kansas City Planning Commission, find the redevelopment project plan for downtown's campus redevelopment district conforms to the UG's downtown area plan.
Thank you. I got a motion for approval by Commissioner Ernst. I have a second, Commissioner Isles.
Yep.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion that the downtown campus redevelopment project plan at five hundred Minnesota Avenue conforms with the downtown area plan passes seven in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. Will that go before the Board of Commissioners?
Uh, no, it'll go in a different form than this, so.
We, and we have one last case to double back to.
You got that. Okay, we're gonna go back to special use permit application SP twenty twenty-three dash zero four-four. Mr. Gonzalez, renewal of a special use permit to operate a car audio installation business at thirteen fifteen State Avenue. Current special use permit SP twenty twenty dash one hundred expired on May six, twenty twenty-three.
Hey, is anyone representing Mr. Gonzalez online? I don't believe so. And do you want to dispense with this case?
Uh, yeah, I can give overboard.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning or Design. Again, this is a renewal of a special use permit for a car audio installation shop on State Avenue. This is in downtown area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are lots of NOVs on the property because it includes not just the business in this building, but this lot, which we've had ongoing issues with, as well as this building. It's all one parcel, right? So we were able to go through all those. There's none related to this specific business, although there are quite a few on the site if you look it up. Staff does recommend approval with conditions. Uh, it says two years, but in, uh, as per code, you can give, uh, after two years, five, and after five, a ten. So staff would actually recommend that we amend the, um, conditions of approval to say a recommendation of five years. The applicant met all the previous conditions of approval, haven't received any issues or reports related to it. Um, they've been working to make the building conform more with the commercial design guidelines, and so staff believes five, uh, years would be appropriate.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? And is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak to this case? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve special use permit two zero two three dash zero four four with the amendment to five years instead of two.
Thank you. Motion is made for a five-year approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Isles?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP forty-four for five years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again September twenty-eighth, seven PM before the Board of Commissioners, and I believe that does include our agenda. Is that correct, Janet?
That is correct, sir.
Any, any announcements?
Staff will make just one announcement. We are planning another special session. I know we've been doing a lot with you guys in the last few months, and I appreciate that, but we're working towards the lead-up to the approval process for Plan KCK, so we'd like to spend five to six at our October meeting, um, giving you a little bit more background, and then in the November meeting, we'll present the draft plan, ask for your final comments, and December, we hope to bring it back for a final vote.
Will November and December be an early meeting as well?
No. Our plan is to just have it on the agenda. It'll be the last thing in November. We'll kind of have a not-too-dissimilar to the November special session presentation. Uh, if there's any changes or just, uh, go over different highlights, and then December, we'll hopefully have incorporated all of your comments, and we can just move forward.
All right.
Um, the KCDC work is academic. It does not have influence. Uh, we do use some of their, um, we have in the past, and will continue to use some of those I, it-to-seat ideas, um, as well as we take a lot of their existing conditions analysis and incorporate that into some of the long reach plans. Harvard Hill is a great example. A lot of that existing conditions analysis was done by those students. Uh, the, the studio they're doing now, I forgot to mention this, Ms. Outs, uh, it does not concern the Central Avenue Bridge currently. Academic studios scope change over a year, so it, we might be able to rope that back into it because I think that's a critical connection down to the, you know, they called it the teardrop, that little piece that was not on I seventy but on the actual river. So there's a continuation of kind of that housing up Central Avenue, so we'll be doing lots of housing typologies, primarily around Bethany Park, actually, so we'll get a little bit more into the neighborhood, but I will work with them to tie it back down better to the river in some way, shape, or form.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your attention tonight and your time. We'll see you next month. Good night.
Night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.